Anthony? I have reverb going on. It is music.
Thank you all, councilor. I have the Open Public Meeting Act statement.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, in compliance with NJ SA 10:4, the Open Public Meetings Act, and in accord with DCA guidelines related to the functioning of virtual meetings, regular scheduled meeting, the Jack... has been published and posted in all appropriate locations. Thank you. Have a local.
For Monday, March 15th, 2021, the Jackson Township Planning Board meeting. Mr. Dolan? Dr. Campbell? Mr. Riker? Mr. Just Wiki?
I'm present.
Mr. Luise? Ms. Britto?
Yeah.
Mr. Wall?
Here.
Mr. Fleming?
Here.
Mr. Ricardi?
Here.
Mr. Haring?
Here.
Mr. Hudak?
Here. May I have a motion for a payment about your recording secretary for this evening, March 15th, 2021?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Minutes. Someone give me an update on where we are with minutes.
The February 22nd regular session and executive session are what's available to be voted on this evening.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Hudak, Chairman. I just want to be certain that I can be heard. I didn't know if I was on correctly. It's Andy Chazwicki?
Yes, Andy, I see.
Thank you. Sorry for that.
That's okay. Thank you. So we have approval of the minutes from February 22nd, 2021, from an executive session. And we also have the minutes from the regular meeting from the same evening, February 22nd, 2021. We have a motion to approve the minutes if no one has any changes or corrections.
So move.
Second.
Local, please.
Dr. Campbell? Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Just Wiki?
Yes.
Ms. Britto?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi? Mr. Haring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Okay, legal matters. We have no resolutions for this evening. Anything to add, Mr.?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a brief announcement. I guess we can do it here under the miscellaneous legal matters. This is really for both the board and to some extent, the public as well. I just want to make sure and that everyone understands, and when I mean everyone, I mean everyone. I mean both board members in their role and quite frankly, members of the public, you know, as well, that board members sit here in a quasi judicial position. In other words, you're receiving evidence. This is not a small P political gathering. So much like in the old days, when if you were sitting and listening to a case either as a judge or as a judge and jury, when you were told or admonished not to read newspaper stories about a particular application, I just remind you with the advent of social media and such, to make sure that you don't do that. Moreover, I don't, I want to make sure as well that the public understands respectfully that this is not a political small P gathering as well, and that the board is guided by evidence and not passion.
Thank you.
And I don't think any member of the board has been swayed in any, in any way, but I just want to make sure that's clear for the record.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody have anything to discuss?
No. Okay, we're going to jump right in. Our first application, Block 10401, 17802, lots 5.04, 57.01, Jackson Park South Section. This is a continuation where we last left off. We had an objector, an attorney, who was testifying. He began his testimony. I ask that Mr. Klee and then Mr. Peters, just very briefly, just bring us up to where we are.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you indicated, this is an application for preliminary, final, major subdivision and site plan. It involves 549 dwelling units, 61 single-family, 144 apartments, and 344 townhouse units. We have heard some extensive testimony from the applicant, and as you had indicated, the applicant has completed his presentation, and presently, we're under a cross-examination by the public.
Thank you, Mr. Boot.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This site is still located in the MF AH8 Mixed Residential Affordable Housing 8 Zone, which is a permitted use. They've indicated that they have a conditional use for the pump station, and it appears that the application does not, at this point, require any variances. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I'll allow the applicant's attorney, Mr. Tubal, if he would like to make a statement before we go into cross-examination. Now's your chance.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Hope everybody's doing well. Jason Tubal, attorney for the applicant. I thought Mr. Gertner raised a good point at the beginning when he talked about the board acting as a quasi judicial entity, and I just, for the purposes of this application, if the board could just confirm on the record that they have not done those things, no member of the board's been persuaded, has engaged in any improper communications, that would be great, just to get that on the record, I think, Mr. Gertner, for this application, just to confirm it.
Mr. Tubal, I can make that representation on behalf of the board as their representative.
Okay. Thank, thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, as you, as you indicated earlier, we're at, we've had multiple hearings on this application, where we left off at the last meeting, was that Mr. Gazarovski, who is counsel for Coupon, was cross-examining witnesses. I'm not sure if he finished that. I believe he did, and I don't know where he stands, if he's going to call his own witnesses at this point, but I don't believe he rested in terms of his, his case, whether it be cross-examination or calling his own witnesses. But what I'd like, just to reiterate, is if he could just disclose who his clients are and who are the members of Coupon, because if there are members of Coupon that are participating in this matter, Mr. Gazarovski should be the one speaking on their behalf. They should not be speaking during the public comment section. So if the board could ask him again who he represents, I think that would be helpful.
Through, okay. Through, through the chair. Mr. Chairman, can you ask, I went over to Mr. Jacob. I don't see that Mr. Gazarovski's on. If he or his representative could raise his hand?
Do we have his client? I know, wasn't?
Ms. Hanam.
Ms. Hanam, wasn't she mentioned?
Yeah.
I see her. She's on.
So, Mr. Chairman, when this happens in front of a court? Did someone raise their hand? I see Eleanor Hanam has raised her hand. Could we speak with her, please? Ms. Hanam, if you could unmute and turn your camera on, please?
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm good. I spoke with him earlier. He's aware that there's a meeting. I did just try calling his phone. I don't know if he's trying to call me back right now. I'm not quite sure if he's trying to get on and he's having difficulty.
Okay. Did you say you tried calling him?
I just tried calling him, and it rang, so he's aware of the meeting, and he's calling me right now. Hold on. Hello? Hi, Ron. We're on the meeting right now. They were waiting for you to get on. Hold on.
We clicked on the link, and it says the meeting has not begun yet, so we've just kind of been sitting here staring at the screen. It says, "When the meeting starts, we'll let people know you're waiting."
Okay.
Let me try going back, hold on.
Yeah, so, through the chairman, no one else has had any issues, including Ms. Hanam. You may want, thank you, Mr. Wall, ask him to refresh the browser, and perhaps, Ms. Hanam, if you could email him the login information?
Yes, I will. Hi. Okay, so I'll email you. There, they should be in. Okay, they, she raised her hand. Okay, there you go. I can see her now. You're welcome.
Okay, if she could unmute herself and turn her camera on.
Here comes your video.
Good evening, Mr. Gazarovski.
You said, "Good evening, Mr. Gazarovski." Good evening. Can you hear me now? Hello?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Gazarovski, meeting has started. We gave the applicant's attorney a moment to speak. Our professionals just gave us a quick synopsis of this application, so you're on for your cross-examination, or continue your cross-examination.
I believe, I've looked at my notes, I believe I was examining Ms. Galvin when we broke off.
My, yeah, no, Mr. Chairman, before, before we get started, just two things. One is, we finished Ms. Galvin. In fact, I actually asked the board at the end of the last hearing, there was, there was only a few minutes left, and you actually agreed to extend, Mr. Chairman, to allow the conclusion of Ms. Galvin's cross-examination. So we, we finished Ms. Galvin, and then my other, the other item that I wanted to bring up, because Ron was not on when I indicated this, I would just like Mr. Gazarovski to indicate who his client is. I know he has indicated that Ms. Hanam is, is part of his client, Coupon. If he could just indicate if there are any other members of Coupon that are on the proceedings this evening.
I only have knowledge of Ms. Coupon. However, she will testify, and you could ask her that question, and she'll respond to it. Okay?
Okay, but no, no one else from, you have no other members of Coupon? There are no other members?
No, I said, there are other members of Coupon in Ms. Galvin, not Ms. Galvin, rather, Ms. Hanam will identify them when I call her as a witness.
Okay, that, that's fine, as long as we could say who they are, so that we know if they're on the meeting, that they're part of your client. That's what I wanted to make sure we, we had on the record, that's all.
Well, are you saying that Ms. Galvin is not present this evening?
No, no, she, she's present, because we, I agreed to have all my witnesses available at every meeting, but what I was saying, though, is, at the end of the last hearing, we specifically asked the chairman, because you had commenced your cross-examination of Ms. Galvin, to allow you to finish that witness, so we could move on at the next meeting to either your case or to another witness. So we concluded Ms. Galvin's cross.
Well, in reviewing my notes, there are really very few limited other questions that I wish to ask of her.
All right. Through the, through the chairman, couple of things. First, Mr. Gazarovski, if you can speak more slowly and closer to the mic, we're having difficulty picking you up.
Okay, can you hear me now?
That is fantastic.
Fantastic.
Second thing is, Mr. Tubal, do you have any objections to reopening Ms. Galvin's cross, just so we can move forward on this?
Well, I thought in the, for the purposes of being efficient, as we've always talked about, we extended the last hearing to allow Mr. Gazarovski to finish his cross-examination of Ms. Galvin. And so, that, we concluded that.
Mr. Gazarovski, how many more questions? Through the chairman, Mr.?
I know more than 10 minutes at most.
I would recommend for the, to make a full record, that, that the cross-examination be reopened. Mr. Tubal would have the right, obviously, to redirect.
So, agree. It's up, it's up to the board, but I just wanted to make it clear that we specifically extended even to allow a conclusion of that witness.
All right.
Just for my own edification upfront, I see the names of Ms. Galvin, Mr. Luise, Mr. Ray and Camp. Were they the only three experts that Mr. Tubal presented in his case?
Experts, yes.
Yeah, so Mr. Ray and he had, he was your, your planner, correct?
Yeah, Ron, you cross-examined him at the last meeting as the planner, correct?
Okay, fine. All right, let me, yes, just several questions of Ms. Galvin, if I may. Thank you.
So, over, Mr. Tubal's objection is noted. Ms. Galvin, if you could un-mic yourself, please, as well as allow for, thank you. Ms. Galvin, you've been previously sworn, correct?
Correct.
Her expertise has been accepted by the board through the chairman. Mr. Gazarovski, your witness.
I did any, Ms. Galvin. I just have a couple of quick questions. If you recall, at the last hearing, there was some discussion with regard to impervious surface and how the percentile of impervious surface was arrived at. Do you recall that?
I recall discussions about the impervious surface, yes.
Yeah. Can you tell me, with regard to this site, what is the permitted percentile of impervious surface? I believe it's 70%, but I'll stand corrected if necessary.
No, I, we actually specifically discussed that at the last hearing, and the 70% impervious coverage was associated with the single-family lots, not with the project as a whole. It was specifically limited to the single-family lots.
Okay, now, are you, are you aware of whether or not there is a specific provision in the zoning ordinance in Jackson which differentiates between percentile of impervious surface in single-family lots as compared to what it might be for apartments or townhouses? Is there a difference?
I don't believe there's a separate impervious coverage standard for the other uses.
Are you saying there is no standard, whatever?
Not with respect to a bulk standard.
Well, in your calculation, did you make a determination, taking into, well, let's talk first about the roadways. You're aware of the fact that, with regard to roadways, there is a requirement for a 50-foot right-of-way, is there not?
Yes, it's a proposal for a 50-foot right-of-way, correct.
And with a 50-foot right-of-way, there is a 30-foot traveled way, correct?
Correct.
Now, with regard to the 30-foot traveled way, that is impervious surface, correct?
Correct.
Is that part of the calculation for the?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, if I may, these questions were the exact questions asked at the last meeting.
They were not.
These were the exact same questions.
Well, they were not. I asked the questions, I'm telling you that, they were not.
Ron, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the transcript from the last meeting. You asked this exact question at the last meeting.
I asked her, I asked her about impervious surface, and her statement was, there were, there was a standard for single-family housing. There were not standards for whether it be townhouses or the like. I never asked her, and she never answered, as to what the percentile of impervious surface was in the remainder of the site. In other words, in the areas where there's townhouses, in the areas where there's apartments, in those sections, what is the percentile of impervious surface? She never asked, answered that question. Can you answer that question?
I, I believe I answered it already tonight and last time, that there's not a bulk standard for impervious coverage for the other uses.
Okay, so it was your testimony that on this site, taking it in its entirety, that in those sections where the single-family housing, the percentile of permitted impervious surface coverage is 70%, but in the other areas where there's townhouses and apartments, there is no standard, there's no regulation as what the percentile of impervious surface can be.
Correct.
Well, do you know, having been the engineer, do you know what the percentile of impervious surface is in those areas?
Uh, no.
Okay, so, not, not to be flippant, but in fact, it could possibly be 70%, 80%, 90%. You have no knowledge what it is?
No, uh, no, that's not what I said. You asked me if I knew the specific impervious coverages for those areas. I do not, but I do know the overall impervious coverage for the site, for the entire project.
Overall impervious surface, that's taking into consideration the, the townhouses, the apartments, and the single-family housing?
Yeah.
You know that, you know, what is it?
It's approximately 41 acres, which is about 30%, 31%.
Forty, of the entire site, 31% of the entire site is impervious surface?
That's correct.
Uh, just briefly about, if you could look at A3, which is your exhibit A3.
Sure.
Let me put that up, please.
Mr. Gazarovski, while they're doing that, please speak closer to the mic. When you sit back, it becomes very difficult to hear you.
Okay.
Hold on a second.
Thank you, Ms. Galvin.
Okay, A3 is up?
Not yet.
It says it's paused.
And, excuse me, Mr. Hudak, while we're just viewing that, if everybody who isn't being cross-examined or testifying, if they could just mute their microphones, I'm just getting an echo of Mr. Gazarovski.
Okay.
Okay.
We can mute that?
Yeah, hold on just a second. I think that I had grabbed the wrong screen, so bear with me just for a second.
Andy, if you could mute your microphone, please?
Is the screen now visible?
Yes.
Okay.
During our examination last, we spoke in terms of discussing the basins in question. Now, there is, in fact, as I can see, a basin which is close to an adjacent parcel of land, and that would look to be on the, sort of the bottom left-hand side of the, can you point to that? Okay, it's pond, it's the wet pond? There's two, there are two wet ponds, and can you just, if you would, tell me what north-southeast was, what part, what part of the property are they on, they do?
Yeah, let me zoom out so you can see the north arrow. In general, north is up. There's the north arrow over in the left-hand corner, so north is generally up on this exhibit.
So it'd be the southwest and southeast portion of?
Okay.
Now, with regard to the basins in question, is there any requirement in the zoning ordinance for buffering adjacent to the basin?
I don't believe there's a specific requirement for buffering of the basins.
Okay. Now, prior to your designing the plan, and while you were planning it, you received some guidance from, I think, the municipal engineer, did you not?
Received review letters from the engineer and planner, the planning board engineer and the planning board planner.
Yeah. Now, is any, any of the, over, any of that basin, let's strike that, can you describe for me the nature of these basins? Are they detention basins or are they retention basins?
I would define a wet pond as a retention basin, because it holds water all the time.
Meaning retention, R-E-T, retention?
That's correct.
Now, is there a provision there for any overflow, as to where that water would go once it overflows?
Yes, these, these two wet ponds ultimately discharge into the infiltration basin northeast in this area right here where my hand is.
Okay, so going from the southeast and the southwest, there are underground pipes or swales that would take it to that infiltration basin?
Underground pipes, yes.
Okay. Now, is any portion of the overage or overflow or overcapacity of those two basins go on to the adjacent property, which is not owned by the developer?
No.
I thought in your testimony, on page 106, and I asked you, the basins in question, they're intention basins, I take it, and your answer to that was, yeah, Y-E-A-H. Now, when I see that, when you said it was a detention basin, I think, at the prior hearing, are you now saying that it, they're, it's a retention basin?
No, there are, there are different types of basins on the site. The wet ponds are the retention basins, which hold water all the time, and then the infiltration basins are dry basins that allow the stormwater, as it comes into the basin, to infiltrate into the ground.
I just want to note for the record, Mr. Chairman, these are the exact questions that were asked at the last meeting, when Mr. Gazarovski was cross-examining Ms. Galvin.
Gazarovski, we're reviewing the transcripts from the last meeting, and you're rehashing the same, same questions. Can you please continue? And you asked for 10 minutes on this recall of this witness. You have just gone over 10 minutes, so.
Well, I've gotten some, you know, look, this is a public hearing. I'm going to be very brief right now, but I want to just clarify one thing. I understand you're speaking of it being an infiltration basin, but my question is, with the two wet ponds, as those ponds fill up, is the water detained there? as those ponds fill up, is the water detained there for a period of time and sent someplace else? Or is it retained there?
The stormwater inflow to the wet ponds is detained there and the overflow for those ponds is piped to the infiltration basin.
Now, in page 107, when I pursued that question, you said that the waters infiltrate, they mean they infiltrate beneath the floor of the basin. And you said, yes, they soak into the ground. Now, soaking into the ground is not the same as running it, the infiltration basin.
Your sound.
The infiltration basins, and there are three infiltration basins proposed. One right here, small one along the property line over here, and another one over in the northwest corner. Those basins allow for infiltration of stormwater into the ground.
But what about, what happens to the water that's in the wet ponds? That's finally the question.
The water, there's a normal water surface in the wet ponds that are maintained, that is maintained. When it rains and water flows into the wet ponds, the water surface rises up. When it gets to a certain elevation or, and a certain volume, it discharges from the wet ponds into a pipe that ultimately leads to the infiltration basin. So the wet ponds do provide a storage function for the stormwater inflow.
Does any of the water that's in the wet ponds infiltrate into the ground and flow beneath the surface onto adjacent properties?
No.
Does not?
No.
Again, that was, that just sequencing of questions was asked now, I think, three times.
I have no further questions. I have no further questions. Of this witness.
No further questions, you said?
No further questions of this witness.
If I may, again, to the chairman, Mr. Duval, do you have any further redirect?
Nope, ready to move on to the next.
Okay, Mr. Gazarovski, you can have the next witness.
Let me ask you this now, in, in light of the comments that were made when I was addressing Ms. Galvin, am I to assume now that my counsel is objecting to my asking any further questions?
Oh, that's not what you're, now, it was only to Ms. Galvin who we all perceived, her testimony as to you had been closed. So, over the applicant's objection, the chairman gave you some additional leeway to reopen. You did, you've now no further. Mr. Duval has no further. Next witness.
Well, having said that, my question is, can I ask redirect of those Mr. Rayn Camp and Mr., the other witness, I forget his name right now.
I would vociferously object to that. I mean, at the last, at the last meeting, you said you were done with Mr. Rayn Camp. At the last meeting, you specifically said you were done with Ms. Galvin. And now you wanted just a second bite at the apple, and I don't think that that's appropriate.
I've been doing this for a long time. As you develop, I mean, there are different ways of calling witnesses. In some municipalities, all of the witnesses are cross-examined at the end of all of a testimony. The reason for that is, is that there's sometimes overlapping testimony which you gather from different witnesses. I mean, this is not a court of law, this is a hearing, searching for what it's about.
All right, so Mr. Gaz, respectfully, Mr. Gazarovski, ultimately is the board's determination. You've called, you've had the opportunity to call witnesses, finish your cross-examination as in, as in any sense of, of the word. Why don't you put on your entire cross-examination first, because there are remaining witnesses. Remember as well, and this is to both Mr. Gazarovski and Mr. Duval, one of the reasons or another reason that your witnesses are available is that for those folks who were not represented by Mr. Gazarovski or part of his family, so to speak, of representation, those members of the public may still have the opportunity to ask questions of those witnesses. So with all that said, and respectfully through the chair and to the board, since we're, since the board is attempting to manage this, my recommendation would be to move on to the next wit, to the next witness to whom you have not yet cross-examined. There'll be ample opportunity for you, for others at least, to ask follow-up questions as well, who've not yet had the opportunity to cross-exam.
My understanding, the only other witness that Mr. Duval called who gave testimony was Mr. Vertarisi. In other words, of those people I've cross-examined, it's only Mr. Vertarisi that I have not. Is that correct?
That's right, Ron. That's the only person you have not crossed. That's correct.
That's correct.
I mean, if I can at this point in time, cross-examine Mr. Vertarisi, but I would also advise the board that based upon some of that testimony, I would request a call back, Mr. Rayn Camp, for brief re-cross.
Well.
I would object to that, but.
That's okay.
Court can take that under advisement, but you need to get your answers from Mr. Vertarisi.
I agree with Mr. Vertarisi.
So, Mr. Vertarisi, you've been previously sworn, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Vertarisi, my understanding of it was, and I wasn't present for it, although I've looked at the transcript, you have retained as the traffic consultant with regard to this project, have you not?
Correct.
And traffic consultancy would also deal not only with just traffic flows, but also parking and questions relating to parking and traffic flow, correct?
Correct.
Now, were you present at the earlier testimony of witnesses as well as my cross-examination of Mr. Rayn Camp?
Yes.
Now, with regard to Jackson Township, are you familiar with what is the required right-of-way of public streets in the township of Jackson?
I am not.
You're not, you're not familiar with what the required right-of-way for streets in Jackson, and you're the traffic consultant?
Well, I'm not familiar with Jackson's ordinance. I'm familiar with the residential site improvement standards that controls those items.
Under what code?
Residential site improvement standards.
Residential site improvement code, call for a 50-foot right-of-way, does it not?
For which type of roadway classification?
A residential street, one film of residential.
50 feet for a single-family residential, yes.
How about with the Georgia townhouses?
There's all different widths based on the width of the road and the orientation of the parking.
With regard to this particular property and this particular project, did you review the residential site improvement standard for roadways and compare it with that which was provided in this particular plan?
Yes.
Now, are you aware of the fact that when in fact there is a, a right-of-way of 50 feet, that while, in fact, while a project is being developed, it may in fact be owned by the developer, but upon the filing of the final map, the right-of-way becomes dedicated to the township in which the project is located. So, when this map is filed, the right-of-way will be owned by the township of Jackson, will it not?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, so, having said that, let's talk a bit about the testimony of Mr. Rayn Camp when he was dealing with parking. And we spent a lot of time talking about what was onsite, what was off-site and what was on-street. You're familiar with the term onsite, are you not?
Yes.
And that would comprise the entire site? Including all of those properties contained within the parameters of the outbound surveys?
In my opinion, I would use the term onsite to be parking that is, for example, in a parking lot with a driveway to a street.
Okay, so you believe that, you believe that, on, well, and I think perhaps I confused you in the manner which I phrased the question. You would agree with me, would you not, that there can be on-street parking, correct?
Correct.
And there can be onsite parking, which might be on the street, but would also include parking in parking fields or parking lots that would be utilized by the developer?
I, I didn't catch the second part of, I got the on-street parking and then?
On-street parking would mean parking that was parking permitted on a dedicated street for public use owned by the municipality.
Well, it wouldn't matter who owns it. If it's on the street, it's on the street. Ownership is inconsequential in, in my.
But when you file a map, when you file a map showing the roadway, that is in fact a property which then becomes under the ownership of the street. These are publicly owned streets. These are not private streets, are they?
Yeah, either way, whether it's public or private, from a traffic engineer's standpoint, if it's on the street, it means you access it directly from the street.
Now, in this particular case.
I'm gonna have to ask you to please keep your hand away from your face. It's affecting sound and your microphone is picking up. So please speak close to your microphone and speak clearly and keep your hands away from your face, please. Thank you.
In, in this particular case, you reviewed the traffic patterns, correct?
Correct.
And you also reviewed the parking?
Yes.
Now, were you present at the last hearing, when there was a lot of back and forth between myself and Mr. Rayn Camp with regard to what would appear to be a, a hybrid of parking along the streets, where there was head-on parking with 10 feet of the right-of-way being utilized for parking and then, I believe, eight feet of the property itself being used so that you would have a 18-foot parking stall with 10 feet of it being in the public roadway and eight feet of it being in the privately-owned property.
Yes, I was here for the whole hearing.
Pardon?
I was here for the entire hearing, yes.
Well, I'm not asking you for here, I'm, I'm asking you whether or not you remember that or recalled it.
Nick, before you, before, before you respond, Nick, before you respond, I just want to put one thing on the record again. The whole site is owned by the applicant. Mr. Gazarovski is insinuating that we're doing something on municipal property, which we're not. I just want to make that clear. I had to do that at the last meeting. I wanted to make that clear again.
Now, I, I want to, I want to clarify that issue, and Mr. Duval is raising it. This is a site plan which clearly delineates the site improvements to the property. Part of the site improvements are the roadways, the curbing and the like. The plan shows a 50-foot right-of-way. That 50-foot right-of-way at the conclusion of this case will be dedicated to the township. Now, one of the arguments which I raised was that because the parking here is seeking a variance, which was called for by the township engineer, that he should have gotten, or he should have to get a consent, a consent from the township to utilize a portion of that right-of-way as he is doing to create head-on parking. This is not on-street parking. This is a combination of on-street and on the applicant's property. And so rather than having, rather than having a parking lot on his property, he's seeking to utilize publicly-owned property so he gets a greater density of residential use on his property. And Mr., is the traffic consultant, Mr. Vertarisi, and I'd like for him to explain to me where in the municipal land use law that is reflected as being permitted? If he can.
Well, so. I think that's for a traffic engine. First of all, we, I would just want to put on the record that obviously I disagree with your analysis there. I just, I wanted to let you finish, but I disagree with your analysis. And I don't think it is an appropriate question for Mr. Vertarisi, but if you have questions regarding the parking, the physical aspects of the parking, or other areas of Mr. Vertarisi's expertise, he'd be happy to answer them.
Well, first of all, not only i- i- am I asking the question, but this was specifically raised in the reviews by, I believe, the municipal engineer in Palando. And they're speaking in terms of this parking field and they're saying specifically it calls for a variance and particularly on page.
Yeah, we, we, Mr. Gazarovski, we went through that at the last meeting and you questioned Mr. Rayn Camp on it.
No, 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 hang on. Now, Mr. Duval, excuse me, to the chairman again. All right. So, we just had an argument, right, Mr. Duval? I, correct me if I'm wrong, about recalling other witnesses. He's allowed to ask witnesses questions.
Um, sure.
Okay, so, Mr. Gazarovski, I'd ask you to rephrase this line of questioning, perhaps to lay some foundation, because the last question you asked had a whole, had a lead-up of argument. So I think it would be better for the record to take a step back, lay some foundation towards your point, and to the extent Mr. Vertarisi can ask, answer the questions, he'll answer them. He's certainly a professional. If he doesn't know the answer, he'll tell you.
Let me, let me just say that I've appeared with Mr. Vertarisi on numerous occasions, and he is always both a gentleman and a professional, so.
I can't hear a word you're saying, Mr. Gazarovski. You're not speaking into your microphone.
Okay.
He said I was a gentleman and a professional. I'd like to make sure that made the record.
I, I was just gonna say, I might want to speak more clearly into the microphone. Mr. Vertarisi and I have appeared many times. So, I'm gonna go to page 6, if I may, of the July 31, 2019 review letter. And it's also in the August of 2020 review letter, but they, but they say the same thing. And if I may, I, I'd like to.
Ron, Ron, just so we're clear, whose review letter are you referring to, just so we're clear?
I'm, I'm going to July 31, 2019.
That Mr., Mr. Peters' review letter?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, that's not his latest letter.
I'll, I'll get his, I'll get the latest one. Let's go to the letter dated August 10 of 2020. That's the most recent one that I have.
Okay.
You have it, Mr. Vertarisi?
I do.
Let's go to page 6. And the second, the second comment from the bottom of the page where it says minimum parking setback from road or drive aisle. You see that?
I do.
And you see where it says under the ordinance, 25 feet is required?
I do.
And what is proposed is parking within the right-of-way. And the comment is that a variance is required for that. See that?
I do.
Now, as a traffic consultant, this is a comment which reflects specifically upon the area of expertise for which you're testifying, is it not?
Somewhat. Somewhat.
Well, it's dealing with parking and you're an expert supposedly in parking, setbacks and the like. You see where.
Where the right-of-way line lands is, where the right-of-way line lands is inconsequential to the traffic engineer's review of roadways and parking and circulation and safety.
Would you repeat that? I didn't quite catch that.
The, where the right-of-way is, whether it's behind the curb or through the parking space, it doesn't change what the traffic engineer reviews, which is the design of the parking space and the design of the roadways and the safety.
Okay, well, did you review the design of these parking spaces and the design of the roadway?
Yes.
And would you agree with me that with regard to this particular design, ten feet of this head-on parking space is in the right-of-way and eight feet of it is within the privately-owned property of the applicant, correct?
Correct.
Would you agree with the, with the borough engineer that in order to do that, that requires a variance?
I would say he's not a planner. That's not, he's a traffic engineer.
He's a traffic engineer, but he's dealing specifically with a parking problem and he's part of designing the parking spaces and the road layout for this property. And are you telling me that you specifically designed a parking space that requires a variance?
As far as traffic goes, a variance means nothing to me as far as what I'm reviewing and I'm reviewing the safety of the roadway. Whether there's a, a, a line that runs through the parking spaces, it means nothing. If this was a, if the line was somewhere else, it wouldn't change my opinion on the safety and circulation of the property.
Look, design, part of your, part of your expertise as a traffic consultant is designing parking areas located within the site. Is it not?
Yes.
So if you were to design a parking area that might encompass a parking field of fifty cars in the center of the site, you would also review the design of the roadway, the private roadway leading to that parking lot. And they would be a purely private parking lot, correct?
Yes, I would review the roadways and the parking, yes.
Okay, now here, you're part of a design team. You personally are part of a design team that has proposed a parking area, two-thirds of which is made up of a public road and one-third of which is made up of privately-owned property. And a variance is required for that. Now, I want you to tell me as a traffic consultant, the basis for this board might have for the granting of that variance, if you can.
Yeah, my opinion is that they could grant the variance because it's just a line on a piece of paper and it doesn't impact the safety of the roadway. There could be other, outside of the traffic engineering realm that you want to argue, but from a traffic engineer's standpoint, the design of the parking space is the same, whether the right-of-way line runs through the space, is in front of the space, is behind the space.
But would you agree with me that you could not have head-on parking unless you utilized the privately-owned property?
Well, that's what we've proposed and we're asking for a diminutive exception from RSIS for it.
And all I'm asking for you is to give to me the basis for that variance, the basis for that exception. What justifies it?
Nick, I think you just did that, but if you want to repeat it, you can repeat it.
This is really an answer and, you know, if he's looking to the attorney to help him with it, then I'll cross-examine the attorney. Let him just answer the question.
Ron, you know I'm not looking to the attorney to answer my question. I will. I answered it once, so I'll answer it again. The line of the right-of-way is of no substance to the design of the roadway. From a safety standpoint, from my experience as a traffic engineer, and that's all I can do. I can't talk about setbacks to buildings and, and other items that you might want to talk to the planner or the engineer about. But from a traffic standpoint, there's a road and a parking space and it meets all the design standards.
Now, let me ask you this question and, you know, just my own personal observations, whenever I'm driving along a public street, a public street where there's a, I don't know what the parking speed will be, thirty-five miles an hour, whatever it may be, in most instances where I have seen cars parking head-on to a curb, it's angled parking and yet these particular parking spots are, you know, head-on.
Yeah, they meet the standard, RSIS. They have, RSIS allows all different types of angles. Angles and perpendicular and parallel. So this is one of the, the items in there that you're allowed to design for and it's the one that was chosen.
On a public roadway?
Correct.
Okay. Now, could not in fact all of this parking be located on the property which is privately owned by the developer?
You're kind of just asking me the same thing in a roundabout way. What we've designed as far as roads and parking meet all the standards required in RSIS for the design of a road and parking. The only issue that I'm hearing come up over and over is where the right-of-way line lands and that's of no consequence to the safety of the road and the parking.
Do you know, or can you opine as to whether or not this particular design, because the property is owned by someone else, would have to have the municipality join in this application?
That's a legal question.
If it were necessary at a later date to add in this roadway, how could that be possible if in fact you've got cars parked there?
Ron, could you repeat the question? You kind of like, it was, it was kind of fuzzy.
Would you agree with me that the reason for a right-of-way being fifty feet is for the governing body of the municipality to utilize that property?
Yeah, I don't know that I quite understand. To utilize the property, which property?
The publicly-owned property, the right-of-way.
Well, yeah, everything in the right-of-way is being used by the municipality ultimately.
Okay. It's controlled, it's supposed to be controlled by the municipality. You know whether or not this developer has entered into any kind of an agreement with the municipality where they could utilize, they could utilize that publicly-owned property for private parking?
I'm not aware.
I just have a few more questions. As a part of your expertise, you also deal with whether or not a design satisfies the required parking spaces for the site, does it not?
Then, if you're referring to the number of parking spaces, yes.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Now, with regard to this particular application, does the plan provide for a sufficient number of parking spaces which are completely on the site without the utilization of the property owned by the municipality for private parking?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna object again that there's nothing owned by the municipality on this property. But, Nick, if you know the answer to the question.
Municipality is gonna own the right-of-way.
Mr. Gazarovski, rephrase the question.
Okay, I believe you've really testified. Can I have the question read back, please?
Is the court reporter on?
Yeah, look, Ms. Karucci's on. Ms. Karucci, can you read back Mr. Gazarovski's question to him, please, if you can? She might be on just by video and not the microphone.
So, Mr. Tuval, so I understand your objection. Your objection is based on the fact that as, as the application stands, the entire parcel is owned by the applicant, correct?
Yeah, what I'm, what I'm, I completely disagree and, you know, with Mr. Gazarovski on his point about this whole issue. It would be new law if he were correct.
That's a different question. So, Mr. Gazarovski, you understand that as it stands now, this parcel is owned by the applicant. However, I think it's a matter of fact, and either one of you please disagree, that should this application be approved, one of the conditions of the application would be that this particular, these particular parking spaces will, will require some sort of easement or agreement between the homeowners association and the municipality because some of this property will be in the right-of-way. Is that a fair assessment, Mr. Tuval?
Yeah, I believe we talked, I don't know if easement was the answer, but what we talked about was for snow removal and maintenance. We did talk about that, correct?
I think, if you could move a little bit slower, please.
Oh, Mr. Gazarovski, hang on, I'm trying. Gazarovski, please. So, we now have an understanding about how and when these particular parcels will be, my word, shared. So based on that understanding, can you rephrase the question to move forward and address Mr. Tuval's objection?
Mr. Tuval, and I don't want to misquote him, but I believe Mr. Tuval stated that if approved, this particular application will have to have, there has to be some type of an easement or an agreement between the municipality and the applicant so that the applicant can utilize this publicly-owned property for private parking spaces. That's what he said. And I'll tell you what, having said that, I would respectfully say that it is impossible for this proceeding to go forward, given that statement, until Mr. Tuval presents to this board as a part of his application such an agreement between his client and the municipal body and that could only be done by an ordinance by the municipality, which would be further subject to questions as to its legality by my clients. I mean, that's a simple one, two, three as a root response.
So, I don't agree with Mr. Gazarovski's description of what I said. I disagree with his area of the law, what he's talking about. And if he wants to keep questioning Mr. Vederisi and not delaying, we can keep going.
You know, I think everybody seemingly has acknowledged, assuming for the sake of argument, that this project is approved, the applicant must get, must get an agreement with the municipality so that he could utilize the municipality's property. How can you proceed forward without that agreement in place?
Because it's not owned yet by the municipality nor proposed, it's only proposed to be and it's a, it's not necessarily, in my opinion to the board, it is not a condition precedent of moving forward with the application. Your question, however, about how it would work vis-à-vis a traffic engineer respectfully are legitimate questions and should be addressed through your cross-examination. So through the chair, I would ask that Mr. Gazarovski proceed with your cross-examination.
Mr. Vederisi, do you know what the speed limit will be in the area wherein this head-on parking is being proposed?
Twenty-five miles per hour.
That's what it will be?
Correct.
Who will be responsible for maintaining the pavement in those areas owned by the municipality?
I would assume the municipality.
Who will be responsible for snow plowing in those areas owned by the municipality?
I think Mr. Tuval just said it before. Part, I guess it's a combination of the both parties, but I don't know if I'm the right person to answer that.
Well, maybe you can answer this question. And how many years have you been involved in testifying as a traffic consultant or traffic expert?
Twenty-five years.
Okay, this is always a dangerous question to ask. Have you ever seen before a proposal such as this where a head-on parking spot, two-thirds of it is owned by the municipality, one-third is in an area owned by the thing and it's located in the public right-of-way?
I've seen plenty of parking in the public right-of-way, perpendicular parking, sure.
Pardon me?
Yeah, I've seen plenty of places where there's perpendicular parking in the public right-of-way, yes.
Fine, but in a public, in a public right-of-way, which partially owned by the public and partially owned by the private developer?
I can't recall if there's a specific one that meets that exact standard.
Have you ever seen an area where a developer such as this gets the benefit, gets the benefit of property maintained by, paid for and improved by, and owned by the municipality?
Yeah, like I said, I'm not aware. There's all kinds of projects. There's projects where the roads are private, there's public roads, there's combination. There's different widths of right-of-way, you know, there's a lot of different ones. I can't say specifically one project that had a design a certain way or another.
There's a distinction between on-street parking and onsite parking, correct?
Yes.
And in this particular ordinance, the parking which is called for, parking which is called for is on, onsite property, not on-street parking.
No, it's all on-street parking. It's on the street. You access it from the street, so it's on-street parking.
I'm sorry, I didn't, say that again, please.
On-street. So all the perpendicular parking stalls that we've been talking about for the last thirty minutes, those are on-street parking spaces.
Yeah, but let me take this slowly, okay? We know there's a difference between on-street parking, which was normally on-street parking on public streets, and then there's parking which is on the site of the development itself. And when we're talking in terms of required parking in ordinances and even in this particular ordinance, we're talking about parking which is required to be on the site, not parking that's on the street.
So in this instance, the only onsite parking spaces are in people's driveways and in the parking lot at the clubhouse.
And you would agree with me not that in reality, those are the only parking spaces that you can count and determining whether or not you satisfy the terms of the ordinance and that's why the engineer pointed that out.
No. All on-street spaces are included in your calculation. It's directly called out in RSIS.
And that's in the Jackson ordinance.
Residential site improvement standards. All parking spaces on-street are counted towards the parking count.
I have no further questions of this one.
Mr. Through the chair, I apologize. Mr. Chairman, through the chair, is there a validity of any redirect?
Not at this time, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Chairman, no.
Having said that, then Mr. Tuval will not be able to call Mr. Vederisi back for redirect, correct?
The only reason he would be able to call him back for redirect is af, remember, the public has not had the opportunity yet, the general public, to ask questions or, and/or make comment. So, both of you really have the right to reserve those redirect or recross depending on if something comes up from the public portion.
You know, in light of some of the testimony of Mr. Vederisi, I did have some additional questions of Mr. Ray and Camp.
Well, so, Mr. Gazarovski, as to that respectfully, it's like section of cross-examination and like you've chosen the manner and the order in which you've asked the questions to now have the opportunity to re-cross him. It's up to, up to the chairperson and the chair, the board and Mr. Tuval. Do you have any objection? If there's no objection, it should be short.
I would object, but I would, of course, because as I. I, I, I would object, but I would, of course, because as I did earlier, but I would, of course, if the board wanted, you know, I, I would leave it to the board. But I, I want to put my objection on the record because, like I said, Mr. Gazarovski chose the order of which he wanted to cross the witnesses. He, he chose Mr. Rayn Camp first, then Ms. Galvin, then Mr. Vertarisi. So, he, he had the ability to make a cognitive choice on which witnesses he wanted and in what order. But I would, of course, you know, leave it to the chair and his discretion.
Okay, let's, let's move along, we're going to keep this short and sweet. All right, you're on, Mr. Gazarovski. So, Mr. Rayn Camp, uh, if, are you back on fantastic, you've been previously sworn?
I have, and I acknowledge I still am.
Mr. Gazarovski, as the chairman indicated, he's giving you the opportunity to ask some follow-up quest, questions over Mr. Tuval's objection. Uh, please keep it short and direct.
He said short and sweet, so.
He did say short and sweet, I did.
I'd rather do both.
My legal term.
And I will be brief, Mr. Rayn Camp, uh, good to see you again.
Good evening, sir.
With regard to the, uh, uh, project in question, uh, does the settlement agreement or does these earning ordinance provide for a number of parking spaces which are required, not on, not on-street but on-site?
Uh, no, the residential site improvement standards covered parking, there's nothing in the ordinance dealing with that.
Okay, now, with regard to the residential side improvement standards, uh, does it have a specific section where it discusses a portion of the parking space being owned by the, uh, governing municipality and a portion being owned by the applicant?
No, under RSIS, uh, parking spaces within public rights of ways count. There is no distinction as to who owns the land in which the space exists.
Okay, now, did you make any effort to determine whether or not, with regard to on-street parking, how many parking spaces there would be if there were parallel parking wholly within the, uh, the, the street or uh, what there is provided for with this head-on parking?
I, I object to that question, it's irrelevant. I object to that question, that's a, that's a relevant, and he answered the question earlier that the RSIS does count on-street parking.
Well, I want, what I want to know is if, if that's his, if that's his testimony, uh, what would be the difference of on-street parking, given just simply parallel parking or, as the case here, head-on parking?
Mr. Gazarovski, I think you're going around in circles here. You're, you're asking the same questions, we give you some leeway here. I have asked you repeatedly to keep your hand away from your face, that it's affecting the microphone. Now, you got your witness, your cross-examination, go ahead.
I'd like to, if you would, Mr. Chairman, bring up, uh, Exhibit 814.
All right, you'll give us a minute, please.
All right, do you want Cray to bring that up?
I don't have the ability.
Okay, do you want, um, I can have Daphne or another person bring it up if you'd like.
We have it. Thank you, Mr. Jacob.
Mr. Chairman, would you look, just to be, to be efficient, you want me, you want to have, I can have my engineer bring it up if you'd like.
We have it, Mr. Jacob from our.
Okay. Okay.
Doing it right now.
As the planner in this matter, did you ever attempt to come up with the determination as to what the impact would be on the utilization of this property if all of the required parking spaces were on the site rather than simply, uh, a percentile of them in the, uh, public street?
I'm sorry, say that again, all, all, if all of the spaces were in the street?
No, if all of the spaces were in, on, on the site, on the, not, not in the public street, but simply on-site, what impact would that have upon the development of this site?
The primary parking count that satisfies the units is bet by the garage and driveway. The issue is providing adequate guest parking. You would need half a space per unit for guest parking. My testimony was that if you strictly did it in parallel, uh, it may be difficult to get half a space, but even if you did, the distribution of it would be very inconvenient for the residents. It would tend to be towards corners, towards the open space and away from where the driveways of the units are. That head-in spaces allow you to provide the guest parking ratio, and it allows it to be in a much more efficient and useful location.
I have no further questions.
Thank you, sir.
Through the chairman again, so Mr. Gazarovski, are you ready? I, I think, and this is up to the board as well as both attorneys, I believe the best way to, uh, proceed would be to have, uh, and of course, this is subject to the board and to, to counsel, uh, is to allow Mr. Gazarovski to proceed with his affirmative case. Um, permit the public to continue to monitor the application. Um, Mr. Gazarovski will make his affirmative case, and at that point, uh, once his affirmative case closes, obviously, Mr. Tuval would be permitted to cross-exam, and at that point, the public would have the benefit of the entirety of the testimony and could then lay into whatever questions and or comments that the, that the general public would like to make. So, before I ask the board, is that acceptable to Mr. Gazarovski and Mr. Tuval?
That's fine with me, Mr. Gurner.
I, I'm prepared to move forward.
Fantastic, so, we got, the fact that the two counsel consent, I would further therefore respectfully recommend that the board permit that as well. Though through the chair, maybe the chairman wants to take a five-minute break, um.
Everybody okay?
Oh. Okay. Keep it going, all right. So, through the chairman, Mr. Gazarovski, you can call your first witness.
I, I thought we were taking a five-minute break.
Oh, no, that was my suggestion, I got overruled.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking for a document, so if you'll bear with me for a second, uh.
All right, we'll give him five minutes, five minutes from right now, so. So, for that, people, uh, members of the public, uh, please be back available at 8:58.
Okay, we're back on, I guess, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could talk later.
Gentlemen, I think at this point, since Mr. Gazarovski is going to call his affirmative witnesses, Mr. Ray Camp, Ms., Ms. Galvin, we can remove them at this point for right now? They don't have to be.
Okay. Mr. Vertarisi and Mr., um, Mr. Gurner, you want that to be for Mr. Vertarisi and Mr. Newman as well, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So. I think we're ready, let's go. Back in session. Gazarovski, your show.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, I was retained by the organization located in Jackson, known as.
Mr. Gazarovski, you must speak closer to your microphone, we're having difficulty hearing you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, at the beginning of this hearing, I introduced myself and I advised the board that I was representing an organization known as Coupon, C-U-P-O-N, located in Jackson, and I understand there's also another organization known as Coupon in North Jersey, but is completely unrelated, uh, to my clients. Uh, I think this board has been extremely patient, uh, going through this process. I intend to call, uh, Eleanor Hanim, who is the president of Coupon in Jackson, and she will speak for herself and well as her group, so we don't just simply have hours taken up with individual members of Coupon saying the same thing, so long as the board, of course, understands that her comments are representative of her group, and she could advise the board how many members there are in her group, and if we could call her, swear her in, we'll proceed forward if that's acceptable.
Yes, it is, and so what you're saying is that she is speaking for the entire group?
She's speaking for the entire group of individuals who belong to the group which is located in, in Jackson. It is in no way connected with the group which is in North Jersey, so that we're clear as to that.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Hanim, uh, are you there?
Hold on, we have to bring her into the meeting.
Okay.
She's in?
Yes, I'm in.
There you are.
Ms. Hanim, if you would, uh, you'll be sworn in first.
Ms. Hanim, if you, if you raise your right hand, you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give before the board shall represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Can you give us your full name, spell your last, your address, and your affiliation, please?
Eleanor Hanim, uh, H-A-N-I-C-E, N-I-C-E, U-M-S-N-A-R-Y. Seven Evergreen Court, Jackson, New Jersey.
Now, Ms. Hanim, what, what is the nature of your relationship with, uh, Coupon?
Um, I, along with, uh, some residents, uh, we formed Coupon approximately a year and a half ago. It's, uh, the acronym for Citizens United to Protect Our Neighborhoods.
And that was formed primarily to pursue and discuss the issue of the application that is before the board this evening, correct?
No, Coupon was created as a grassroots organization solely for, um, residents' concern. Um, if residents feel as if they are not being fairly represented or listened to, sorry. Um, in their homes or in their neighborhoods.
Aside from your membership in Coupon, the board.
Mr. Hold on, Gazarovski, you gotta wait. Got to clear the dog.
I'm sorry.
You could tell the board, uh, how long you have personally resided in, uh, Jackson Township, and where you resided when you lived here?
Um, I have resided in Jackson Township, uh, April 10th, it will be 57 years. Um, I resided originally on the, um, more east end in Edgewood until I was about 13 years old, we moved out to Casville, and Roba Farms Lake was my backyard.
So, historically, you have been a part of Jackson?
Yes.
Okay, would you be so kind as to give the board your thoughts with, now, before I say that, uh, have you been present at all the various municipal meetings dealing with this particular project?
Yes, I have.
As in president of all the hearings which took place before this board, both with regard to the north section as well as the south section?
Yes, I have.
Okay, would you give the benefit?
Mr. Gaz, Mr. Gazarovski, can I, can I just ask you and also Mr. Gurner a question? Do you think now is the appropriate time, since Ms. Hanim indicated that she's the president of Coupon, to, um, provide the board with the names of the members, um, who are, who are part of the group now, as opposed to later? As she's identified herself as the president, and I, we've been asking since the beginning that, in addition to Ms. Hanim, we just know who, who, who comprises your client. I think that that might be helpful, but I, I defer to Mr. Gurner in the chair if they want that information now, but I think that would be useful.
I, I don't see why, I don't see why that is in any way necessary, uh, with regard to, when she's identified, uh, the location of this Coupon, uh, matter, uh, she is speaking as a representative of that group. Uh, what does it matter whether there's five members or 50 members? Uh, uh, she's speaking on behalf of the group, she's the president of that organization, and as such, she can do that.
Yeah, so, well, the, the only reason I bring it up, Mr. Gazarovski, is because there are other, um, members of the public on the, um, on, on the, uh, listening on to the hearing, and we need to know if others are going to participate, if they are members of Coupon, because if they are, then you represent them, and Ms. Hanim is speaking for them, as you indicated. Um, and you also said that at the beginning, when I asked the question before Ms. Hanim testified when we started, that she would be the one that would provide those, those names, so I, I, I think it's, I think it's very relevant.
Can I just ask one question, Mr. Tuval?
No, actually, representing, so. Yeah, and, and I'd like to say, Mr. Tuval, I, I, I hear what you're saying, however, we're not at residents', um, or, or the public's comment area yet. So, I think we have until then, until, to identify the people, because we don't want them to come in as, uh, uh, commentary. So, let this, please, play out, and, and we'll get to that.
Okay, I'll, I'll defer to the chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Gazarovski, continue.
And I think you were about to tell the board, uh, your position as to why you're taking your position in opposition to this application.
Um, well, as I had said, I grew up on Roba Farms Lake, I know that land. I, um, played manhunt in, on that land, I rode horseback up Prosper Town Road. I do know the, the very vital environmentally sensitive nature of that property. I do know the, I, I'm not rehashing the north, um, I'm not doing that, but I do know that there are residents that have reached out and know they are not members of Coupon, but from the northern section that are extremely concerned and extremely worried about their neighborhoods. Um, you know, residents reach out to us and ask for help. That's what we do as a group, as a grassroots group. Um, I am concerned with the nature as to how this property is going to be impacted. Um, I do know that it is part of the Barnacle Bay watershed, the Sea One waterways, I know that there are major, um, major, uh, species that are endangered, threatened and endangered species. And listening to this application and listening to Ms. Galvin not being able to delineate exactly where the wetlands were in her last testimony, that was very concerning to me, especially when I'm listening to testimony that, um, we have a trajectory of, of the stormwater management flowing from west to east towards the wetlands, and I know that the wetlands in that area breed on cedar water, so this water is going to continue, completely contaminate and destroy the wetlands from this project. When I asked the question, um, or the question was asked about the swamp pink, and, um, I do have a letter from the United States Department of the Interior when the, this project was under hot-bill, and they recommended that it be fenced off with signage, um, so that the swamp pink, which is a federally protected, uh, species, uh, look, I grew up out there, I grew up in those woods, those woods, come June, there's blueberries everywhere. The kids are going to go out with bowls picking blueberries, you play manhunt, they're going to destroy the, the, um, environment of the swamp pink. Right at the northern tip of this project is the Cranberry Bog, so I'll go down the road of the Cranberry Bog. I am a historian, I am a teacher, that's what I do, I teach history, I love history, I have a ma- masters in it. And as we were doing our research, discovered that most of this area is on the New Jersey DEP Historic Preservation, um, Registry. And there are sections of this that is completely not, it's just being ignored. Um, Prineville Road is on the historical, um, registry. And now we're going to be looking that it's going to be vacated and dedicated, and so are, are we saying? And so are we saying that residents who go horseback riding on a public road of Prosper Town can no longer do that? Once this project moves forward? Because basically, that's all I was hearing. That's what residents are hearing. The residents that are right to, if I'm looking at the project on 5/28, there's a resident that you have a pond right up against her property. And she has a basement, and you're trying to say she's not going to have any water. I have a basement. That property, it is almost tidal. I know that the groundwater from all the expert testimony from all your E I S, because a lot of it was from your Shore to Palma under the old program, and it was just put into the environmental impact under this new engineering company. And they said, "You need borings because the water table is so high." Have soil borings been dug? Those test borings? Because I haven't found it. I went down to Trenton. I sat there for hours, and I got... I took pictures of every single document that was in that box on that property. And a lot of what has been presented is not what I found. It's not what I found. With the groundwater, and I will just read what I have. L's expert testified that the soil was tested in a lab. L's expert relied on Shore to Palma's 2005 groundwater and geotechnical study. And it is referenced in their 2019 stormwater management report. But I do not see that they actually applied the suggestions. The Palma study on page two suggests, based on their review, "The previous design did not meet the appropriate standards for NJDEP approval without radical redesign and excessive cost to retrofit. Several factors, including high seasonal groundwater table, fast draining soils, and differential runoff, were identified as critical issues in determining the type and extent of development for this site. We determined that a more comprehensive subsurface investigation was warranted, and that the results of this investigation would be utilized to support the redesign of this project based on the compliance with the NJDEP." What I'd like to also note in the E I S on page 19, with that, it identifies the species throughout the upland and wetland communities on this site, such as the barred owl, the pine baron tree frog, the bald eagle, the red-shouldered hawk, the wood turtle, the northern pine snake. And there were other, the koops tree frog, they feel are also in this cedar branch waterway. With this, with everything that I have read through, I really have not found a comprehensive management plan. I have also, when it came to that, a comprehensive management plan that was signed off by and prepared... No, it was approved by Ryan Anderson, manager Coastal Bureau, as long as L met all of these conditions. And so far, I do not see that these conditions are being met, because we also had, at first, we asked about the fencing for the swamp pink. We were told that was not going to be done. We have not seen a comprehensive management plan when it comes to the threatened and endangered species that I had just read. There's also supposed to be federally protected northern long-eared bat and the migratory songbirds. So when the question was asked about the monitoring of when the clearcutting is going to happen, no one seems to know that answer. So all of this is very concerning. I do love the outdoors. I am not looking for my town to continue the clearcutting that we are all witnessing right now. The historical value of this town is going to be wiped away with this project. The other question that, you know, I find very concerning is that when this project was, or when this, when L had purchased this property around 2015 from hot built in a, basically a bankruptcy sale, with the condition that they would deed part of this property to Jackson Township. In return, Jackson, they would allow a 50-foot easement from the north to the south to allow the storm, the water and sewer lines to come from the north and the south. What is very concerning, when we're talking about the Sea One Waterways, yeah, Jackson said, "Here you go. You can have your 50-foot easement to run those lines from the north to the south across the tributaries for the Roba Farms Lake." How is that not endangering, not completely destroying that critical habitat? Because in the reports that I have read, that is where the most critical habitats are on that piece of property. I may have one more thing. As for Prosper Town Road, Prosper Town Road is, as I had said, one of the oldest roads in Ocean County. It is of historical value, whether the developer or anyone else believes that or feels that. They don't live here, so it's no relevant to them. But it is irrelevant to the residents of Jackson Township. So I would like to know if this is being deeded over or whatever is going on with that section of Prosper Town Road. And basically, Jackson Park is taking no responsibility for the road, but they're occupying the road. How is this road... What we want is that their HOA, it is written into the covenants in their HOA, that this road can, where it's being occupied on this project, cannot be used for parking, because parking is a big question on this property. So we do not want our historical road used as a parking lot to be lining up and down the streets. The concern is where the roadway will continue going north. Are we going to see lines of cars going up Prosper Town Road, which you all refer to as a dirt road, to get to Reed Road or the back of Great Adventure to just go sightsee the animals? That's a concern, because all of that is extremely vital habitat in, you know, that region. The entire project is also a part of an archaeological aspect, as also on the historical preservation. We have seen that this developer has neglected Jackson Heritage by even looking into it. And I suppose most of that would be it, as far as the draw on the water. So we're going to, the north, which I cannot discuss, but the MEI put a site off Prineville Road. So now we're looking at 1,100 units, times that times two, for argument's sake, which is 2,200 people. Now you throw kids in there. We're looking at, we're looking at over 3,000 people occupying water and then watering their lawns and doing all what average people do with water, without giving it a second thought. This is pulling on the aquifer. This entire region of this township is pretty much on well water. So the concern, it's a great concern that this draw is going to actually start contaminating our wells, because it's pulling from the middle Potomac raredin aquifer, which is above the Cohese, which it's supposed to infiltrate. And it's not going to happen if this pull keeps on happening. The destruction of our drinking water, our aquifer. And I think that's about all I have. The tree ordinance, it's pretty sad that a developer walks in here and they can just say, "Oh, well, I have my affordable housing contract, and I can just clear cut." Speaking about the affordable housing, which I find extremely concerning, is that what, or questionable. It's very questionable to me. We have a statute for fair share housing that states that it would be put in locations that would not... Let's, I'm going to actually just read part of the statute. Any municipality that filed a motion prior to 1994, let's move forward. Okay, council rules shall be entitled to a determination of its rights to credits pursuant to standards established by the legislature. Where am I? So municipal adjustment of the present and prospective fair share based upon available vacant and developable land, infrastructure considerations, or environmental or historic preservation factors. When Fair Share Housing wrote their statute, it stated that it should not be put into a place where it's on a very environmentally sound piece of property. And I find it concerning that this is just being, this part of the statute is being ignored when it comes to this particular piece of property. But that's where I will finish my testimony, Ron. Just real quick. Ron?
I'm sorry.
The individual that is to be called is Orion Gray, Grech? I was given the wrong name.
Okay. For the record, I was given a name of someone being called. That name was incorrect, so the next person whom I shall call...
Hang on, Mr. Gazarovski. So you're done with your direct?
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
All right, so Mr. Tuvall, do you have any cross?
Yeah, sure. Just very brief, though. Good evening, Ms. Hanam. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
All right, I'll be quick, I promise. When was Coupon founded, the Coupon that you're representing?
We incorporated November, I believe it was November 1st, 2019.
Okay, and how long have you been a member?
When we created it, November 1st, 2019.
Okay, since the beginning, okay. And how long have you been president? The whole time, or?
Yes.
Okay, and how many residents of Jackson are members of Coupon?
Well, we have our board, and I don't know, I don't know what you classify as members. We don't have a membership. We have had, well, with COVID, we haven't had many meetings. But, you know, we would have meetings to discuss what's going on. Residents would come, residents would go. We had fundraisers, residents in town donate money. So you can't classify somebody who gives a donation as a member, somebody who decides to show up at a meeting just to see what it's all about. They're not a member. So it's not like it's a formed organization where we have like a standard of membership. I mean, I have my board. I can give you my board members.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, so it would be myself. It would be Sheldon Hofstein. It would be...
If you can just spell that, please?
Sheldon. S H E L D O N.
Yep.
Hofstein, H O F S T E I N.
Okay, and do you have addresses, or?
No, not with me. I would not give out their addresses anyway.
And I...
It's a private organization, so I really, by law, do not have to give you anything.
I agree with that. If they're not here to testify themselves...
Yeah, because most of them are not here tonight.
Go forward with the rest of the names, Ms. Hanam.
I'm sorry?
Go forward with the rest of the names.
Craig Hubbard.
Okay.
Kathy Giancola.
Okay, so that's the board?
That's my board.
Okay. Okay. Have you appeared on behalf of Coupon in any other municipalities or any other, before any other planning boards?
Only Jackson, but I did go to the Tom's River Council meeting and made a statement last week on behalf of you.
Okay, all right, I have no further questions at this time.
Okay, so Gazarovski.
If I would ask my client to once again state the name of the individual who I believe... What is her name again, Ms. Hanam?
Ryan Grech, G R E C H.
Okay, if that person is present, I would request that she be brought into the meeting.
This is Ryan Grech. I am present. I was not notified that I would be called as a witness tonight. I was going to make public comment during just the general public comment.
Gazarovski.
So, Ms. Grech, I understand that, but you are present, so rather than you being called as a witness, you can just simply make the public comment which you wish to make as a private citizen, if you wish to make it.
Can we just, Mr. Gertner, Mr. Gazarovski, can we just identify if this individual is a member of Coupon or what their affiliation is?
No, she's not a member of Coupon, to my knowledge.
No, I'm not, and that's fine. It doesn't matter to me when I make the comment. But I would say that I'm a little uncomfortable being put on the spot like this, and I am not prepared to, you know, answer questions. I can certainly give my prepared comment.
Ma'am, you could just make your comments and...
Well, hang on, ma'am. If you could allow your video that we, so...
Sure.
No, he called her. So I just want to make this clear, ma'am. Can you spell your last name? I'm not going to swear you in yet, but can you give your, spell your last name?
My last name is Grech, G R E C H.
So we have an agreement amongst council that if you're called as a witness, you're not going to have the ability to ask your own questions. Now, this is interesting, because Mr. Gazarovski called you, and you sort of don't want to be called. I think that goes to the chairman's question to me. So, and there's been a representation made that you're not a member of Coupon. So do you not want to testify at this point? So you reserve your right to ask your own questions as well?
I have to say, you know, I'm not a lawyer. I'm unfamiliar with sort of the norms and the proceedings here. Like I said, I was not prepared to be called as a witness.
So I'm going to, excuse me, so I'm going to do this. Mr. Gazarovski, you made the representation as the potential witness that she's, one, she wasn't, she didn't know you'd be testified. You, in fact, didn't even know of that. I think for her own protection through council, please do not call her. You'll save your own opportunity to make any statement or ask any questions at the proper time. I think that's better. I think that's better for you, particularly if you're indicating that you're not really prepared.
No, I, look, I agree with that, I was told that this young lady was.
Mr. Gazarovski, I haven't practiced as long as you, but there's a first time for everything, this is a first time for me, but it's for the witnesses' protection, I think it's better off that, and Mr. Tuvall, you, you recognize that as, as an issue of fairness. She's not prepared, she wasn't, she's made the representation, so we're not gonna.
No, that, that, that I have no issue with whatsoever, I don't want Ms. Grech to feel uncomfortable and not have to testify if she doesn't want to, that's fine. But this just reiterates the point that we need to know who the people are that Mr. Gazarovski represents and who's part of Coupon, because it causes confusion, people can say they're not part of Coupon, so they can speak separately. That's why we, I've been asking from the beginning who the members are of this group. I, I don't wanna, of course I wouldn't want to put any person on the spot where they are uncomfortable, but that's, but that's why, you know, separate and apart from Ms. Grech's situation, we need to know who the people are that are part of this organization for, for purposes just like this and other purposes. It just leads to confusion and it's, it's not fair.
I, I don't think there's anything confusing about that, and with regard to this particular party, my understanding was that she wished to make a statement, if she doesn't wish to make that statement, that's fine. I wasn't calling her as a witness, I was calling her simply as a party who had an interest in this. If she chooses not to make the statement, fine.
All right.
If, if that's the, if that's the case, if I'm just, it's just my turn to make my public comment, then, then of course, I'm, I'm happy to do that.
That's all it is.
Mr. Gazarovski is incorrect, this is your case now, Mr. Gazarovski. If you're gonna call witnesses on, on your behalf, then that Ms. Grech would lose the right to ask her own questions, that's the whole point.
Look.
You can't just call people to make statements and then allow them their own cross-examination. That makes for an unwieldy hearing, it's unfair to the public, it's unfair to the applicant, and it's unfair to any, any objector.
I, I have called as my witness the young lady who just testified, or there are other people out there who wish to make statements, that's fine, I'm not calling any further witnesses.
Okay. That's fine. So then you've closed your affirmative case, Mr. Gazarovski.
I have.
Okay. Mr. Tuvall, anything you'd like to say?
No, if that's, if that's Mr. Gazarovski's case, then that's it, I, I asked the question of his one witness, that's who he, who he brought up.
And now, as I understand it, it's open to the public.
It is now.
Well, it was, oh, sorry, so, Mr. Gardner, can I ask, can I ask a question real quick? So before, if you remember at the, before Mr. Gazarovski started cross-examining at the last meeting, we had other members of the public ask questions and make comments to the witnesses, because Mr. Gazarovski, I don't think he was available at those meetings, so we let other members of the public ask questions and make comments. So I'm assuming if we're opening it again up to the public for questions and comments, it's for members of the public that have not previously asked questions or made comments, correct?
Yes, now, but also, we just, from the people that are part of Coupon, we did not get them identified, we only identified the board members. So there are thirty-five attendees waiting, I, I assume many of them are waiting to speak, say their piece, so some of these people, I'm sure, are members of, of Coupon. Well, so, Mr. Chairman, I think.
Here's my position, and I recognize that we want efficiencies and the like, and Mr. Tuvall may object to this, but it's important to.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Gardner, I'm just.
We can't hear, we, we can't hear what's being said, I'm sorry.
Is that better? Sorry, I hit the wrong button.
I can hear, I can hear you, I just couldn't hear the person that was talking before.
Well, in, in any event, so, Mr. Chairman, I, I think respectfully, we should ask folks if they are members of Coupon, but quite frankly, it's important to have a full record. I mean, we would ask the public to be mindful of the fact that a fully developed record has occurred, they have, folks have access to the transcripts, they've heard direct and some cross-examination, so we'd ask that you not be repetitive. You can certainly say you agree with such and such and so-and-so testimony to short, to shorten it a little bit, but it's important to have everyone to have at least feel like they've had the opportunity to speak. Being mindful as well that this is a board, a quasi-judicial board, as I indicated, and that everyone is bound to hear evidence. All right, that means.
All that I was saying before, Mr. Chairman, was that, at the, I believe it was the February, I'm sorry, it was at the February first meeting of the board, there were, I think, around seven members of the public that did cross-examine witnesses and ask questions, and then, and that's because Mr. Gazarovski was not available, I think his office was covering the meeting, but he wasn't available, so we were waiting for him. We allowed, we allowed members of the public to make comments and ask questions, and then we turned it back over to Mr. Gazarovski, so my, my, again, my only question is, are, are you opening it back up to members that are, number one, not affiliated with Coupon, and number two, did not have the opportunity to ask at that meeting, is that, is that what we're doing?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Is that okay?
No, that's fine, I just wanted to be clear, that's all.
Right. What I'd like to see is members of the public that care to comment on this application, if they could raise their hands at this time, so that we could get a feel for how many people would like to speak. Okay, so it looks like we have six hand raised, and we have a, a woman on deck who's already got her camera on, and start with you, ma'am, Ms. Gresh, is it?
Grech.
Right, okay, so Ms. Grech, if you kindly raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the information, questions, comments, or testimony you're about to present before the board shall represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Let me first make it clear for yourself, respectfully, and for members of the public, that all of the applicant's professionals are available, so should you have direct questions of any of the applicant's professionals, we would ask just to follow through on that, you call whom you want to, to speak, we'll allow them in, and then you can ask whatever questions that you would like of them as well.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity for me to speak tonight. My name is Ryan Grech, I'm a policy advocate with the Pinelands Preservation Alliance. We're a private nonprofit organization, and just to be clear, I am not affiliated with the Coupon group at all. Sure, and tonight I'm speaking on behalf of not just Pinelands Preservation Alliance, but also our partners at the New Jersey Conservation Foundation, Save Barnegat Bay, and the New Jersey chapter of the Sierra Club. The proposed development, Jackson Park South, is located within the Pinelands National Reserve, but does not adhere to the land density and wetland protection standards described in the Pinelands Comprehensive Management Plan, or the CMP, which is the set of regulations.
I apologize, I was busy pontificating, and I forgot to ask you to formally spell your last name and your address, please, I apologize, that's my.
Nope, no problem, my last name is G, as in George, R E C H, and my address is eight ten Farragut Avenue in Mayes Landing, New Jersey.
All right, through the chairman, you can continue.
Go ahead.
I apologize.
No problem. This site is within the Pinelands National Reserve, but outside of the area managed by the Coastal Area Facility Review Act or the Pinelands Commission. Thus, any development in the area is controlled directly by the Comprehensive Management Plan for the Pinelands National Reserve. The sites slated for residential development are designated forest area under the CMP. And according to the CMP, quote, "No development shall be carried out by any person unless that development conforms to the minimum requirements and standards of this plan," that's from NJAC seven colon five zero dash five point one A. Forest areas are of particular importance within the Pinelands, quote, "These undisturbed forested portions of the protected area support characteristic pinelands plant and animal species and provide suitable habitat for many threatened and endangered species. These largely undeveloped areas are an essential element of the Pinelands environment, yet contain high-quality water resources and wetlands, and are very sensitive to random and uncontrolled development," end quote. That's from NJAC seven colon fifty dash five point one three. Yet it is uncontrolled development that is being proposed by Jackson Park in an area containing some of Jackson's most precious natural, precious, excuse me, precious natural resources. In particular, the development violates the minimum land use and density standards laid out by the CMP for forest areas. The CMP permits a municipality to allow no more than one acre per fifteen point eight acres of undeveloped uplands in its forest area, a density far lower than the proposed development. Clustering, which is required for developments of two or more residential units in forest areas, as this development is, is intended to minimize development impact to the forest parcel by reducing lot size to one acre and permanently protecting a percentage of the parcel through deed restriction.
Ma'am? One second, could you just down a little bit, our recording secretary is having difficulty keeping up with your statements, so. Slow it down, thank you.
I will, I'm sorry about that.
Okay.
Jackson Park proposes five hundred and forty-nine residential units on a total of a hundred and twenty and a half acres, averaging a density of point two-two acres per unit, which clearly violates the standards set forth by the CMP. Pursuant to the National Parks and Recreation Act of nineteen seventy-eight, and in accordance with the Forest Management Plan, quote, "No development shall be carried out within three hundred feet of any wetland unless the applicant has demonstrated that the proposed development will not result in a significant adverse impact on the wetland," end quote. That's from NJAC seven colon fifty dash six point one four. "We object to any development on this site which does not require a three-hundred-foot buffer or transition area around all identified wetlands on the above lots. The wetlands on these lots are the headwaters of the Toms River and contain habitats for threatened and endangered species. Any activities within three hundred feet will have a substantial impact to the larger wetland complex. Reduction of these buffers will result in significant environmental impacts, both on-site and downstream in and out of the Pinelands Protection Area. The wetland systems on this project site are all connected and produce the headwaters of the Toms River, which discharges many miles downstream into the Barnegat Bay." The New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection has given the streams on this site a designation of category-one waters. When this stream leaves the Jackson Park site, it enters into the Pinelands Protection Area. In two thousand and four, the Pinelands Commission issued a Toms River Corridor Plan. This plan called for enhanced use of conservation easements and permanent land protection efforts in both Jackson and Manchester Townships. It increased protections for sensitive areas and expanded a wildlife habitat buffer to six hundred feet along the entire stem of the Toms River. All these protection measures will only work if you begin at the top of the headwaters and wetlands. We feel that this development is in clear violation of the standards that regulate development in the forest area of the Pinelands National Reserve as defined by the CMP. An implementation of the project will destroy and adversely modify wetlands that are documented habitat for threatened and endangered species. Again, this is on behalf of Pinelands Preservation Alliance, New Jersey Chapter of Sierra Club, New Jersey Conservation Foundation, and Save Barnegat Bay. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Through, through, through the chairman, are there any questions of this person from either of the attorneys?
I have no questions.
Yeah, can I ask one?
Absolutely, is she still there?
Hi, Ms. Grech, how are you?
I'm fine, thanks.
Okay, you use the term "we" consistently throughout your testimony, I just, and maybe you said it at the beginning, but I just didn't hear, who is "we"?
I work for the Pinelands Preservation Alliance, that's my organization, and the, the comments I read tonight are, we have sign-off from representatives from Save Barnegat Bay, New Jersey Conservation Foundation, and the New Jersey Sierra Club, so all four of those organizations are "we."
Okay. So, Mr. Gardner, all I would say is, I don't know if it's appropriate for Ms. Grech to, to speak on behalf of that, and if the board should consider it, because technically she's part of an entity which would need to be represented by council, until she used the term "we" throughout, throughout her testimony, I didn't realize that, so, she wasn't, she wasn't here as an individual, but as a member of an entity, which before a board would need counsel, so. That's just for the board to consider, so I would object respectfully to her comments.
All right, so the objection is noted for the record. Okay, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven people now with their hands raised that would like to comment on this, I see some people have commented already in a previous hearing on this application, so I'm gonna go with, we have Charles Caruso, I don't believe he has commented on this. Can you allow Charles Caruso to come in, please?
Thank you.
Hello, can you, can you see me and hear me?
Yes, you can, thank you. Mr. Caruso, if you kindly raise your right hand.
Okay.
solemnly swear or affirm that the information, questions, comments, or testimony you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please give us your full name, spell your last, and your address.
My name is Charles Caruso, C A R U S O. My address is twenty-nine Nassau Drive, N A S S A U, in Lawrenceville, New Jersey. I am appearing as a individual tonight, however, I am also chairman of the Barnegat Bay Partnership Stormwater Work Group, and I've spent a, a significant period of time looking at stormwater regulations. However, I am not representing that organization, I, my comments are only my own. As I mentioned, we have spent, I have spent a significant amount of time reviewing the new Department of Environmental Regulations on stormwater, which were previously published back in March of two thousand and twenty, and they became effective fully on March second, two thousand and twenty-one, very recently. They really embody a significant change in the approach to stormwater, as opposed to previous efforts by the Department of Environmental Protection. These new efforts really are focused on keeping stormwater as close as possible to the place where it's generated. So, and the approach basically utilizes green infrastructure such as bioswales and rain gardens to really alleviate a lot of the pollution problems that have been caused by stormwater efforts in the past and stormwater regulations that have been utilized in the past. So things like wet ponds are some of the problems that exist and have existed under the prior regulatory scheme. This was a comment, the, the problem with wet ponds was noted previously in the December hearing on this application, and there were comments raised indicating that, you know, they really become a habitat for Canadian geese, which leads to lots of pollution problems, and as I note, this application has at least two, and I think possibly three, wet ponds that could create future problems. The other aspect of this application, which is problematic, is that the, the water table is very close to the surface. is very close to the surface, and these new Department of Environmental Protection Regulations have very stringent requirements as to how infiltration basins need to be structured well above the water table, which may be very problematic in this application. So, further, I understand the Jackson Township has implemented, and I believe this is correct, but Jackson Township has implemented the new stormwater regulations in an ordinance which they passed through a second reading on February ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, and those regulations incorporate many of the changes required by the DEP regulatory scheme. My question is a question for the engineer, I believe her name is Ms. Galvin.
Okay, so you can hang on for a second.
Sure.
Mister Jacob, can you bring up Ms. Ms. Galvin again? She is in, you're ready, right, Ms. Galvin?
Yes.
And you've been previously sworn. Thank you, Mister.
Yes.
So my question for Ms. Galvin is whether the new Department of Environmental Protection Regulations and the new stormwater ordinance passed, recently passed by Jackson Township only as of February ninth, whether your development plan incorporates all those significant changes, including such requirements as the maintenance requirements as to who is gonna be responsible for maintaining the, the best management practices that are incorporated in your proposed development plan? And basically, I'd like an assurance and an assurance to both the public and to the board that these new regulations are fully incorporated in your development plan.
The project is not subject to the new regulations, either the DEP regulations or the local regulations, it was approved under the prior regulations, which is consistent with the DEP approvals that were issued back in two thousand and eighteen.
So the new ordinance, you're saying, is not applicable to the current development plan?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, that is somewhat of an assurance to me. In terms of future development, future projects, future expansions of this project, what regulations would they fall under?
If it's a new project, they will likely fall under the new regulations.
And let me ask you, how, this I understand has got segments of the project being developed, there's a preliminary set portion, and then a much larger portion of the project that is being considered?
I'm not familiar with a larger portion of the project, there's the north section, and this is the south section, which is the subject of this application, there are no other sections of the project, there's only two sections.
And both of them occurred under the prior regulatory scheme?
That's correct.
Okay, well, that addresses my major concern, so I am satisfied with that answer.
Any other questions, sir?
Uh, no, no other questions.
Thank you. Okay, um, so I'm looking for people that have not testified, Mindy Murray. Ms. Murray, could you please, if you can hear me, please unmute yourself and activate your camera, please? Good evening. You're still muted.
Can you hear me now?
You can, thank you.
I'm sorry, my name is Ashley Melinda Moich, I'm really not comfortable giving my address.
Well.
My question, I don't have to give it legally. And my question is, why do you want the names of everybody in the coupon? Yes, sir.
He's sworn in.
Okay.
And, and ma'am, you do need to give your address.
I haven't had to give it at any other town, why do I need to give it to you?
Because this is a public forum and it's a quasi judicial hearing?
Oh, because it's a judicial hearing, that makes it different?
But yes.
Okay.
No, I appreciate that, thank you for your understanding, you're raising your hand. Do you solemnly, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Kindly give your full name, spell your last and your address, please, and again, thank you.
Melinda Moich, M-O-I-C-H, sixteen twenty-two Forge Pond Road, Brick, New Jersey. And I hope that the next time I'm threatened by some of these developers, you guys will protect me because you made me give me the address. My question is, why do you want all the names, and I don't belong to your Jackson coupon, but I do belong to other environmental groups, and that is why I was threatened. Why do you feel you need the names of the people in the coupon, especially if they're not speaking or testifying tonight?
We don't.
They have a head of something ahead.
I'm gonna answer the question. Ma'am, you asked the question. So, so the answer to that question is, quite frankly, we do not need them if they're not gonna testify, but if they're gonna testify, they're in the control of Mister Gazarovski's group, and then he, as the attorney for the organization, should be presenting.
Should be, okay, he should be presenting if they're gonna testify, but if they're not gonna testify, why keep asking for the names?
I don't, I don't believe they are, do you?
They were asking for the names, sir, they were asking for the names of the people in coupon. Not that I don't feel that everybody should give their name, I have a problem with the address, and I have a problem with the address because I've been threatened, and people have been on my property, ruined and stuff, all because I wanna protect my watershed, my environment, and my property interests in towns in Ocean County.
Ma'am, you have a question?
Yeah, the question is, you answered it, I guess you don't need the names unless they're going to testify. Correct? Correct? Cool, thanks so much, guys, have a good night.
Okay. I see we have five people. Denise, do you know which of these five have not testified yet? Britta? Okay, Britta Forsberg?
Hi, can you hear me?
Ma'am, if you'd raise your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm that the information, questions, comments, or testimony you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your address, please.
My full name is Britta Forsberg Wenzel, Britta is B-R-I-T-T-A, Forsberg is F like in Frank, O-R-S like in Sam, B-E-R-G hyphen Wenzel, W-E-N like in Nancy, Z like in zebra, E-L.
Go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Britta Forsberg.
I think we need her, her address and whether she's a member of coupon, sorry, sorry.
Well, that's okay, I'll briefly explain that, my name is Britta Forsberg Wenzel, I'm the executive director for Save Barnegat Bay, the organization's address is one seventeen Haynes Road, Toms River, New Jersey, and I'm not affiliated, nor is the organization, with coupon.
Okay, thank you.
I really just wanted to let you know that I'm here, and I am the principal spokesperson for Save Barnegat Bay, I really don't have much to add, other than we fully support and did sign on to the letter that Ryan Greck read into the record, and we have been opposed to this development and the excessive size and land cover since the very beginning, so just wanted to let you know that I'm here because of the oddity of these digital meetings, we thought that'd be best if one person spoke for our organizations, so thank you.
Thank you.
And Mister Chairman, I just have to put the same objection on the record that I did for the other person that spoke on behalf of a group regarding counsel, but I'll just, I just, I just wanted that noted for the record, thanks.
Could we find out what the basis for this objection is, and it's great to say object to the record, what's the basis for this objection?
He gave, I could do it, excuse me, he's already given the basis, whatever weight the board gives is its own determination, but the basis of the objection was he argues that these organizations separately require counsel to present testimony.
I never heard him say that.
Yep, it's all right, or we can weigh, weigh that determination as it sees fit, but it's noted for the record, that's all. Okay, Denise, do you see anyone that has not spoken?
Okay, how about? They have all spoken before?
All right, listen, it's, it's five after ten, how does everybody feel? Everybody okay? Well, so I have to, let me just. There was more testimony, so I believe that, you know, these people have a right to be heard. Okay, first up, Richard Cirillo? Cirillo? And Mister Chairman, as, as Mister Cirillo is being brought up, it's the same respectful determination that, quite frankly, the board gave Mister Gazarovski with re-cross, so to speak, these folks are limited to questions and comments based on the new testimony presented as they've previously been, been sworn, previously given testimony, so they should not be expanding and repeating themselves, but they do, as, as the chairman indicated, have a right to speak. Okay, Mister Cirillo? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you fine, you okay with me?
Yes, all right, so I, I will re, re swear, if you don't mind, sir, do you solemnly swear affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, and for the record, I've not spoken on this application before.
And I apologize, that's my error.
It's quite all right, I really just want to address a couple of procedural things, I'll leave.
So I have a procedural thing, which is, can you give us your full name, spell your last and your address, please?
Of course, it's Richard C-I-U-L-L-O, the address is two fifteen Grant Avenue in Seaside Heights, and I am not a member, quasi-member, or in any way, shape, or form affiliated with coupon.
Okay, sir.
You just addressed one of my concerns, which was that I heard Mister Duval request that anybody that had previously questioned expert testimony be prohibited from asking additional questions, and I was gonna submit to you that that would be improper, given that there was additional testimony since the last time there was public comment, but it seems to me that you concur with that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, good. I wanted to talk briefly that there seems to be, and I, I think it's important that it be put on the record, Mister Duval has repeatedly asked for a complete membership list of coupon, it's not been one time tonight or two times tonight, it's been during the entirety of this application, is there anybody in the room that disagrees with that, including Mister Duval himself?
Well, I, if I may, Mister Chairman, I think respectfully, you've also addressed that from the, one of the last witnesses, which is involving the gratuitous, gratuitously involving any members, if they're not gonna testify, there's not necessarily a reason, a reason to do that. The, the issue was narrowed that a list of witnesses be provided so that there's some level of management over the meeting, so I think that question has also been addressed, and we can move on from that, we're not gonna get a whole list of members just to have a list.
Okay, so, again, from a procedural standpoint, should the board tonight or in a future meeting deny this application, I think it's important for the record to reflect that Mister Duval has withdrawn his request for the entire list and will restrict that information for people to identify themselves only if they've offered testimony in this. So I'd ask you to ask Mister Duval to put that on the record.
Duval?
Sure, so, I'm, I'm actually glad you, how do you pronounce your last name, I don't wanna get it wrong, I'm sorry.
Cirillo, but you can call me Rich.
Okay, so I'm, I'm glad that Rich brought that up, because I do feel that the list is, is relevant, I know the board has made a ruling as to why they, they feel it's just relevant as to witnesses, but I felt it was, it was relevant for several reasons, number one is, I think the board should understand the makeup of the organization to weigh the, the testimony that's been provided, that was one reason, and the second reason was for conflict purposes, if there are members of the organization who have some sort of conflict that's part of the application, so I felt that, that, and I still do, feel that disclosure of those names is relevant, the board has made its decision, you know, I, I still have my feelings that that should have been disclosed, but the board has, has ruled on that issue, you know, they've, they've, I guess you could say sustained some of my objections and overruled some of my objections, which happens during the course of, of any application, but, you know, I still maintain that that's something that is relevant as part of, for this application, but the board, I think, has made a ruling on that.
The, the board has indeed ruled, the, the purpose of my question is, should this planning board deny your application tonight, you obviously are aware that you reserve the right to appeal that decision, my question is, going to the record to reflect whether or not you're willing to forego that request for the list of the entire membership as an appealable element of.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna get into, I'm not gonna get into litigation strategy with you, but my, my request has not been withdrawn by me, the board has made a, a ruling on that.
Okay, so, back to the chair, please.
Yes, sir.
If I understood Ms. Hattam's testimony correctly, she made it abundantly clear that there is no such thing as a member of the organization, there is an executive board, she has identified those people, beyond that, she's also made it clear that there are financial supporters of the organization, but there is no such thing as a membership list that Mister Duval has requested, and I believe that the record should reflect that with some emphasis being placed on that by the board.
Well, I think, you know, Ms. Hattam did make that statement, and it is part of the record, her statement, what, what more do you want us as a board to do?
Well, again, I, I just wanna emphasize what her answer was, it is now a matter of the record, and I think Mister Duval has said that he is going to reserve the right, should the application be denied, that that might be an appealable element of the application. For that, I, I guess I'm complete for tonight.
Okay. Understood.
Awesome, have a great night, everybody, thanks for your time.
Thank you. We still have four people with their hands raised, Mister Nemeth? He did. He did, all these remaining people have testified. Mister Nemeth, can you hear me? Please unmute yourself and activate your camera, please.
How about that, can you hear me now, sir?
I can hear you, yes.
Very good.
Um, do you have a camera?
Yeah, I can see myself on there, so, I see myself on there now, you can't see me?
No. I can hear you loud and clear.
All right, let me try to get back on because I see myself. All right, let's see here, video. Let's try this again.
Oh, there we go.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Nemeth, you're, can you get a little closer? Because it is very dark.
Yeah, sorry about that. Help me try to change some of these lights here.
Sorry about that. All right, that's a little.
No problem.
Thank you. All right, sir, if you raise your right hand again, do you solemnly swear affirm the testimony information, questions or comments? You're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and so and nothing but the truth.
Yes, sir.
Kindly give us again your full name, spell your last and your address, and I'm respectfully um just repeating the same uh direction that we gave to Mr. Gazarovski as you previously have the opportunity to speak and testify. Your any information you uh further information you uh present should be limited to the new testimony.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And and Mr. Goodman and Mr. Nemeth is also not a member of of Cooper, correct?
Mr. Nemeth was uh was objecting this project 10 years ago when it was through Hobbit. I work alone.
So so Mr. Nemeth, if you spell your uh last name and your address again, please.
Sure. Um, my name's Jeff Nemeth, N as in Nancy, E M as in Mary, E T H, three nine seven, Perrinville, Jackson, New Jersey.
Okay, sir, go ahead.
Okay, um, is I I believe if I recall his name correctly, uh, Vertis Sase. I apologize if I pronounced it wrong.
No, it's it's okay. It's Mr. Vertarisi, Mr. Nemeth.
Vertarisi, I I apologize. Sorry about that.
Get him.
I did have a question. I think it might relate to him because when he was being asked by Mr. Gazarovski, uh, I did have a question about some parking involved there if he's available.
Yep, we can let him back on.
Just gotta give it a minute, I guess.
No problem, guys.
Yeah, Mr. Tuval, I apologize. You may not have heard me. Looks like he may have dropped off. Can you get him back on, please?
Yeah, no problem. Hold on one second. Let me, I'm just gonna mute and shut off my camera, and then I'll I'll try to get him so he can log back in, okay?
Sounds good.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, it appears that Mr. Vertarisi is watching. He's an attendee. I guess he needs to be promoted to a panelist. But but he, I just spoke with him. He is um, he is um, here.
Yeah, I see him as an attendee. Mindy Murray and Paul.
Mr. Nemeth, I botched his last name worse than that, so don't worry about it.
I'm sure I'll screw more up. Now, am I correct, gentlemen, if I'm asking uh questions about parking? Uh, I guess um parking spots and uh i- is he is he the right gentleman to be speaking to about this?
Since you've written through the chair, you've reserved your right. Uh, if he can't answer the question, I'm gonna ask, you know, as a matter of courtesy, that he tell us who of the experts team would be best to answer that.
Okay, fine. Fair enough.
You'll do your best.
Previously sworn.
He, yeah, uh, Mr. Vertarisi, you're on again?
Yes.
Fantastic. All right.
Hi, Mr. Vertarisi. How you doing?
Good. How are you?
Okay. Hey, uh, just I know you were going over a lot of things with parking. I'm just curious, how many visitor parking uh spots will each townhome uh say stack townhomes or the apartments have?
Uh, so there's a number of different sections.
Okay.
Combined between the different townhouses.
The reason why I ask is because, I mean, a lot of the parking was in question. I've heard many a person say, and you know, if you have a, you know, be it a holiday, or if you have an array of visitors in in that locale, I think it could potentially get pretty messy. So I was just curious to see, you know, how much was allotted for visitors.
So between the the uh multifamily section, because there's a lot of sharing of parking going on, uh, so in the apartment area, there's a total of two hundred and ninety-nine spaces. In the uh townhouse area, five hundred and four. Stack towns. Uh, ninety-four guest parking spaces in the stacked towns. Let me go back. It's ninety-four shared parking spaces for the stacked townhouses.
Okay, I'm just I'm just curious, how does that equate to each unit where each family lives? Uh, you know, so you're gonna have guests come over. Are you going to have uh, is that going to be for two cars per home, more or less? I mean, do you know how, you know where I'm getting at there?
Yeah, so it exceeds the point five per unit that are required to be shared spaces on the street, shared spaces. Remember, the the townhouses have garages and driveways as well.
Okay.
We're in excess of the required point five.
Okay.
Well in excess.
Okay. So point five. Okay, like I says, this is a, I just had a feeling with all the questions there. I mean, do you guys feel that's more than adequate? Point five?
Yeah, we actually have more than point five. Point five is the minimum you're permitted. We have in excess of point five.
Okay. All right. So I appreciate it. Uh, I just wanted that to be for the record because I do, I didn't never heard that that question asked, and uh and I think that I think that was an appropriate question, but I appreciate you doing the research for sure.
You're welcome.
Okay, and and if the board, if I may, I just have a few comments uh before we go because I learned a lot today by a lot of the people that were up here speaking, and I like to learn. And uh, as you know, I I I live in this area and I have a keen interest in there, and I really have a lot of questions uh when it comes to the environment. Um, I am all for building. Uh, I do it for a living. Uh, I've lived in this town for almost twenty years. I've paid uh hundreds of thousands of dollars in taxes, so I think I deserve to be heard. And um, and most most importantly, um, I just find it very ironic after listening to uh to the young lady who was uh speaking, Ms. Ms. Gretsch and uh Mr. Caruso uh seemed like they're very, very much up on the environment, and they probably probably forgot more uh about the environment and these issues with tributaries, uh watersheds, uh water tables, and everybody up there combined, and that includes counsel. So I just find it very ironic, Mr. Tuval wants to strike commentary from these people. Uh, why? Because they're concerning knowledgeable information that might be threatening. I just don't understand why somebody who uh puts a grave concern in, it should be struck. Um, it was very educational, and I think each and every one of you uh on the board was listening and listening very hard to that because that actually had me raise even a higher eyebrow to this whole project now. So um, in my opinion, uh, I mean, there are some big concerns with the watershed, the tributaries, and the water table, our wells, our own wells. And if you have so many groups uh that uh do this for a living, saying that this stuff is wrong, uh, I have to ask each and every one of you guys on the board who you are here to represent me, represent us, the people who pay taxes here. So before any hasty decisions are made approving anything, I think that these this uh onion should be peeled a lot deeper, and that these concerns, which God forbid, this gets okayed because some silly fair hous- housing uh loopholes allow this to be uh to be jumpstarted before all the uh layers are uncovered, this must be really looked at deep and hard before anything gets accepted or passed. So I implore you guys uh to unanimously vote this down until more can be discovered on this. In my opinion, fair housing is being used as a crutch to accelerate this process. These people who want this project, they don't live here. They 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 aren't going to feel the ill effects. It's not going to bother their well. It's not going to bother their properties. This goes for the owners of the property. This goes for the attorneys and everyone. I live here. I could be, I I I will be an affected individual by there. Once you get them shovel started, there's no turning back. So before you do it, I think each and every one of you guys who swore to take an oath for the betterment of this town should not have a judge from afar who's never stepped a foot on that property using some loophole telling us what we gotta do. And if he was here, I'd be telling him the same damn thing. So in the best interest of this town and us prop- us property owners, you have to act in our best interest, not the Fortune five hundred business owners who have more money than they know what to do with. And the rest of these projects in this town, guys, and ge- ladies and gentlemen, that not one of them I've seen have any restrictions. It's just been a free for all. This is the bad one. These are the wrong ones. So if you want to do what you have the power to do and you were elected to do, this needs to be halted and peeled uh peeled back and looked into much, much deeper, especially with the environmental concerns of groups that forgot more about this stuff than every single one of you know. So I'm asking you, until this can get uh, can this get further looked into, to say no to all of this. I appreciate the time, and I really hope that you do the right thing, and you you guys are the voice of the township, not people who live outside of Jackson in Tom's River using loopholes and telling us what we have to do. Judge Troncone doesn't care about what happens to here. Mr. Tuval does not care what happens to my property. They're paid to make this look like the best thing since sliced bread, which we all know is 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 a crock, and this is a horrible, horrible location, and I hope that you follow up with the environmental groups and their questions. I thank you guys for your time, and I really, really hope you do the right thing.
Thank you, Mr. Nemeth.
You're very welcome.
Okay, um, hands up. Let's see. Okay, we have Joseph Ricciuti. I'm sure I'm butchering that name. Good evening, sir. If you could just unmute yourself, thank you. Counselor?
All right, sir, if you'd raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the information, questions, comments, or testimony you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I swear.
Thank you. Can you give us your full name, spell your last and your address again, please?
Joseph, last name is R I C C H I U T I. At seven, Corey Lane, C O R E Y, Jackson, New Jersey.
Yes, sir.
Yes, um, Mrs. Haddam had brought up about Prosper Town Road tonight, and uh previously I'd uh asked about the legality of Prosper Town Road. And if I could have you bring up Exhibit A four.
If you give us a minute, please?
Yes. A four. I'm sorry, that's not, I'm I'm looking for the over the overhead view with the uh gra- graphics of the whole development. I'm sorry. I thought it was A four.
Mr. Ashud, you're just you're just talking about the um, the one that shows the entire project?
Yes, the whole one with the streets and everything.
I I thi- I think I I think, Mr. Chairman, that's A three if the board wants to bring it up.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
No, no problem.
Or just close it.
That's it. If he can zoom in on the northeast side where the road eight crosses Prosper Town Road. And zoom in on that real close. And if you can zoom in, I guess, go to a hundred percent and get it real close, please. Okay, thank you. Um, the hearing last month, I had asked Ms. Galvin how the uh transition of Prosper Town Road was going to be where it crosses your road eight. And after looking at the printed testimony, she stated, and I'm reading from the transcript, as as the Prosper Town Road walkway approaches the the new roadway, okay, it will first cross the sidewalk that's proposed along the new roadway, and then there's actually a curb, and then you would cross across the new road, up a curb on the other side, and then across the sidewalk, and then continue on Prosper Town. I did my homework and got with the Jackson Police Department because no one can tell me at the last hearing about using that road and the availability of what it could be. In Jackson Township, uh, Police Department, that is a legal road, even though it is only eight feet wide and unpaved. If you have a vehicle that is registered and insured, you can drive on Prosper Town Road. The way this development is going, that's impeding the right of way of Prosper Town Road. It's, that needs to be treated as an intersection because legally, that's what it is. It's a legal road. You cannot just block it with curbs and sidewalks. So the, you're denying Jackson residents' use of a roadway unimpeded. I know it's it's not paved, it's got potholes, but it's still a legal road. A legal vehicle can go down that road. And then later on in the testimony, um, Ms. Galvin testified that it's mostly just a dirt path, and it's not intended in the future for vehicles to access the path. So who's um, who's not intending of the use of the future of the path, the developer or the township giving up use of our our roadway? The developer or is the township giving up use of our, our roadway? If I can get someone to answer that.
Mr. Tuval?
The township can do what it wants in the right of way.
Yes, but your development is, is, is going across that right of way. It's not a right of way, it's, it's a legal street. It's not a right of-
We're not impeding the right of way. We're not, we're not, we're not impeding the legal right of way.
You're putting curbs and sidewalks on the roadway. How is that not impeding? You're going to be going down that roadway, then you're going to hit a, a big hole and another curb on the other side. You can, that's impeding the traffic on a roadway. Plain and simple. I mean, we can go into the back and forth potato, patato, or head in parking and right of way fifty feet, we don't want, we don't want to go bouncing the ball that way. That's simply looking at that plain and simple, it's impeding the roadway. There should be no sidewalks, no curbs at that intersection. And I guess the township will have to put a stop sign on either side of Prosper Town. But you cannot block that roadway.
Mr. Tuval, are you testifying that, um, that that is a right of way and, and what you're doing is proper?
Correct, and I believe we talked about, um, you know, that the township would ultimately have to get involved as well, and there would be stop signs there. We worked with your board professionals on what other signage and other items would be there, so. We, we have, we have no concerns about impeding the right of way.
So will you be taking out the sidewalk and the curbs there?
If you want to ask one of the experts what'll be there, then I think you should do that versus asking me, that's a better, somebody else should answer that question.
Well, whoever's in charge of that, if that expert can come on.
So I, I think, I think that would be Ms. Galvin, who can probably clarify a little bit more about that intersection.
Wouldn't that be their traffic?
Well, I think she's the one who touched on that more.
Yeah, she did.
Yeah, I, I think either one, I'll, I'll let Daphne state if she feels more comfortable testifying to it than Nick, but, um, Daphne, you on?
Sure, I, I, I'll start, so.
Yeah, Daphne, you have to, Daphne, you have to put your camera on if you're going to testify. Thanks, and just, you're still on the road, you know that, right?
Yes, so when the, uh, when the plans were submitted to the planning board, we didn't receive any comments back from the police department regarding this quote unquote intersection. We did propose on one of the other exhibits, I believe it was Exhibit seven B, where we had proposed some signage to help control that crossing right there. And we can work with the police department, if that's the correct entity at the township, along with the planning board consultants, to refine what's happening at that location. But we hadn't received any comments up to this point.
That's still not answering the question, I want to drive my car around Prosper Town. I get to that sidewalk, I could go down a curb and up a curb on the other side. That is, that's impeding my right of way, my right of way to go.
Right, so, so, so a couple of things I, I can help clarify there. The curb is mountable, we can make adjustments to the alignment and the elevations of the sidewalk and the curb to accommodate the vehicles, but I think it needs to be coordinated with the police department.
That's just-
And we've agreed to do that.
I think the simple way, remove the curb and sidewalk at that intersection, that's all, plain and simple. It won't impede nothing.
I think, I think Ms. Galvin, I think what we're saying-
I'm sorry, she's trying to put lipstick on a pig, it's not going to work. Let's, let's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, if you could finish, Mr. Ashutya, go ahead.
It's like, we'll taper the curb, we'll do this, we'll do that, no, it's plain and simple, it needs to be an intersection. Plain and simple, yes or no? Don't dress it up.
I think, I think what we said was we'd work with the board professionals and the police department regarding the technical aspects of that area, is that correct, Ms. Galvin?
That's correct.
Okay, that's all I had.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, have a good night.
Okay, Randy Bergman. Where did, um, Mr. Bergman go?
Mr. Bergman, if you can hear me, kindly unmute yourself.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay, Mr. Bergman, raise your right hand again, please, sir. You solemnly swear affirm testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board. Represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Kindly give, again, your full name, spell your last and your address, please.
Uh, Randy Bergman, B E R G M A N N. My address is five Brentwood Drive in Jackson.
You've been previously sworn had the opportunity, we'd ask that you confine your questions or comments to new testimony.
Right, right. Uh, I just, I, I wanted to, uh, Mr. Nemeth stole a lot of my thunder. And I think he rightly pointed out that a lot of the environmental issues that have been raised tonight had pretty much received short shrift during some of the previous hearings. I, there were at least eight or ten concerns that the president of Coupon raised that really hadn't been addressed. And, you know, I don't know whether it's appropriate really to go through each of one, each one of those, but I would just urge the planning board to really defer decision on this application until all these issues related to the environment have been addressed, because I really don't think they have been today. And I think it's really unfortunate that a lot of these questions that were brought up not only by the Coupon president, but the representatives from the environmental groups tonight were not raised by, by the planning board members themselves or their professional staff. So, um, I would just urge the planning board to defer a decision and really look into a lot of these concerns that were raised tonight. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, lastly, we have one person left, Denise Garner. Okay.
Good evening.
Hey, Kumi, hi.
Ms. Garner, you raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
I kindly, again, give us your full name, spell your last and your address, and please recall to limit your questions or comments to new testimony presented before the board.
I do, yes, Denise Garner, G A R N E R, Eighth Over Court, Bear, Delaware. Um, I am a board member of Save Bernice Bay. Um, and I have several questions that I'd like to ask Daphne, um, if I may.
Absolutely, if you could, uh, Ms. Galvin, if you can come back, please. Through the chairman, obviously, so.
This is, Mr. Gardner, these are just questions on new testimony?
Again-
Yes, they, there are questions that I believe that I was, I didn't have an opportunity to ask the last time, I believe. Um, okay, I have a question about, actually, the, um, in the E I S, and from reading that, they, they're talking about the excavation and, you know, the construction of the utilities that will be put into, you know, into this area. Um, and because the groundwater there is at a, it is a very high water table, there is, what they're stating there is that there will be, they will be hitting this high water table throughout construction, okay?
Mr. Chairman, I need to object, I need to object to these lines of questions because we went over this the last time, and this is just an opportunity to just follow up as opposed to asking questions.
I, I didn't ask these questions the last time.
I, I understand, you might not have asked someone, but the point in-
These are, these are my questions, and they are, they are new, okay? So I understand that you feel that you want to eject, eject to them, but I feel that they need to be in, in the record.
Ms. Garner, do you listen?
Yes, I do.
Well, you weren't, so-
You were not.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, but Mr. Tuval, your objection's noted. However, the board has taken a position, particularly with laypeople, to give them some latitude as well, the objection's noted. Ms. Ms. Garner, uh, you, you are guided, though, that this is to be based on new testimony. That you're able to do that, and please, just ask the questions, don't lead up with, with, uh, testimony. And Ms. Galvin, do you understand the first question?
Uh, I just ask her to repeat the question itself. Okay, so my question is, with the fact that, you know, how will the construction be controlled while you, you are going to lay down the utility lines for this development? Because, you know, there is a high water table within this area. And based on the parks and the, um, the soils that they did, some of the areas are going to be, you know, hitting groundwater at six inches. So what, what will be the process that you will do in order to protect that groundwater from not getting contaminated? From heavy utilities going in there, the, um, the equipment going in there? The trucks, the diesel fuels and such, what is the, what is your protocol on that?
Sure, so, so-
Daphne, before you go, Mr. Gardner, I think wanted to speak, so hold on.
Well, I, I, there's really a compound question, so, Ms. Galvin, do, do your best.
Sure, so this, this question was almost specifically asked the last time, okay? But this actually gives me an opportunity to provide a better answer, so I'm okay with this. Okay, so the concern is that how would you, how would the construction process protect the water table? Okay, so as part of the Soil Erosion and Cement Control Plan, we have to provide what's called a Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. Um, and that's actually a state issued, I believe it's a state issued permit that's known as the Stormwater General Permit 5G3. And that addresses how to handle any spills or, or types of issues that could lead to those kinds of problems.
Okay, so did you apply for that permit and you, you already have it?
No.
We have a plan already given for that?
The, the plan has been prepared, and we applied for that permit, we submit for that permit after we receive certification from the Ocean County Soil Conservation District.
Okay, so you're still in the process of, of, and there is a possibility that with them looking at this and looking at the parks and the soils, that you will not be granted that permit? Yes.
Possibility.
Okay, so, um, next question. There's, um, I guess I have the, the areas that are perked within this, of course, are between seven inches and eighty-four inches. So this is something that they're going to look at, and they're going to look at, you know, from a geologist's point of view, they're going to go out there and, and check where these soil pits are, and where they're going to look at that, and they're going to say, okay, I'm, I'm tapping into water at seven inches, some areas are eighty-four inches. So, you know, how, how, how are they going to get around that? I'm just, you know, I've, I've seen this, my brother-in-law's a geologist, so answer it, because I think-
Again, just, just for the record, these are the, these are the exact questions that were asked the last time.
Oh, were they? I heard him come in.
If, if your, if your question is how the Soil Conservation District will evaluate that situation, then I think your question is directed to them.
Well, no, I'm directing it to you because you're, you are presenting the, the plan and, and you, you know, you're here at the board and you're, you know, bringing this application forward, so this is a permit that is very key to you and having the enableness to, you know, get this to be approved. The planning board may approve it, but the soils, they may look at it and say, this is not a good plan, we have a problem here. And I think once they read the environmental testimony, they're going to come out and reevaluate this land. It is very key to, you know, the hydrologies of the C one, which is Tom, Tom's River, and the entire watershed.
All right, Ms. Galvin, can you just briefly touch on the process of outside agency approval? That'll, that'll in, further enlighten your answer, I think.
Sure, so one of the outside agency approvals that's required is a certification from the Ocean County Soil Conservation District. Okay, following receipt of that certification, we will submit to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for the 5G3 permit I spoke of before.
Right.
And we, we will need to have both of those approvals in place prior to any site disturbance.
Okay, but I'm, I'm just saying, because, you know, you're, what you're bringing to the board tonight and from the previous testimony is a conceptual design. And under that is the realization of the impacts that are not really brought forth. So the people that have come up, the experts on your side, the experts on our side, and the people that do have environmental backgrounds are bringing that forth. So when the NJDEP looks at this, they're going to say, this testimony really is, the realization here is that we have, there will be impacts to the groundwater. There will be impacts to the threatened endangered species. So, you know, overall, when you start to look at those things, and especially with them, even though you're saying that you're grandfathered into the stormwater management, which you aren't because you did not receive approval yet. Approval means if, if your application already has been approved by the planning board, that means grandfathering. This application has not been grandfathered, and it has not been approved yet, although the judge is, you know, making it be heard, it is not, it has not been approved by the board yet. If they approve it tonight, that means you still have to follow those new stormwater regulations because it's after the March second date.
That's incorrect, but, you know-
I don't think it is, Mr. Tucker, it's not. And I feel that this is an important, key area, Jackson is headwaters. Jackson is one of the most important townships in Ocean County. It is the birthplace to a trifecta of waterways. And it gives life, and this development will have a major impact to that.
All right, Ms. Garner, that also is very similar to testimony and comment you gave previously. Do you have any new questions?
I just, the, with the, um, the permit, which was actually cleared up
Sorry to you, Ed.
And giving the, you know, the, the, the residents and the rest of the board an understanding that they still have to apply for those permits, it's, it's not a done deal.
Yep, we appreciate that, we understand, the board certainly understands the concept of outside, excuse me, outside agency.
And it is up to you guys to really protect that. This town, like I said, is very key to a, to watersheds, but we're talking about the Tom's River- to a, to watersheds, but we're talking about the Tom's River right now, and these individuals that do come in here, just like Jeff stated, do not live within this area. And it's shameful that they're pushing our town to do this. It's not a good application, it is a very bad application, thank you.
Getting previous comments. Anything new?
Thank you, Ms., through the chair.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. All right, guys. I guess, Mr. Gazarovski, do you have anything you'd like to add?
What I would like to add is, obviously, we've listened to, it's almost 11 o'clock, and I'm, I would assume and hope that this board will not attempt to vote on this matter this evening, we're rather, we'll give counsel, meaning myself primarily, an opportunity to present closing comments in a in a, in a right atmosphere, so.
On that same line, Mr. Gazarovski, if I may, respectfully, I'm jumping ahead of Mr. Tubal a little bit. I don't think the board and the chairman disagree with you. I think the better approach, which Mr. Gazarovski's aware, Mr. Tubal is not, and I've respectfully followed in the past, there's been a voluminous testimony, sorry, I couldn't get that word out, voluminous testimony related to this matter for the board to consider, obviously, it's admonished, the board is admonished to consider only the record. I would ask that, through the chairman, that both council be prepared to present closing argument at the meeting of March 22nd, there's time reserved, and that at that point in time, the board would then, after closing argument, could deliberate and make its determination. It's not good practice.
So.
Well, that's my recommendation, yeah.
No, no, I'm, I'm, that's the board's pleasure, I'm okay with that, I, I just, I just wanted to just, for the record, state the, the public comment is closed, it's, the next meeting would just be myself and Mr. Gazarovski giving a closing statement, and then the board deliberating, is, is that the intent?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, fair enough, everybody.
So this, yeah, so this matter will be carried without further notice to the next, to the March 22nd.
And I'll, I'll announce it, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the public, Mr. Tubal and Mr. Gazarovski, this matter will be carried to the March 22nd, 2021 meeting without the requirement of further notice. The public is directed to the municipal website and other proper places of publication for information as to participate, and in this case, observe virtually. The board is again directed respectfully to, certainly you can review the transcripts and evidence presented. The two attorneys are directed respectfully to prepare their closing arguments and closing statements, and at that point thereafter, with a waiver of any time from the applicant, the board would be then directed to listen to any additional information from its professionals and deliberate.
One thing that we, we've elected to do is to officially close the public comment, so if I can get a motion for that, please?
I'm sorry.
Move to close the com, public comment, Campbell.
Second. Go call, please.
Mr. Dolan? Did he say yes? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Jess Wiki?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
And Mr. Hootie?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Gardner, the meeting, that, that March 22nd, 2021, that it was carried to, that's at 7:30 PM as well, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, and the board, and like you said, the public can go to the, to the township website or call the board secretary if they want to get the information for the meeting.
Without question, absolutely.
Okay, I guess we need a motion to carry this to the next meeting on April, I'm, I'm sorry. March, I'm getting ahead of myself, March 22nd.
Motion to carry to March 22nd.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I get a motion to close? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.